Eileen, could we have an opening statement, please?
Yes, you may. Township of Howell Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, February 10, 2025. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 2, 2025, a copy of said notice was emailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on January 2, 2025, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 2, 2025, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Barillo?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Orozco has been excused. Mr. Ryan?
Present.
Ms. Scottson?
Here.
Mr. Cabarucas?
Here.
And Chairman Mertens?
Here. Could I ask everybody to please raise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Okay, Andy, can we swear in the professionals?
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, the help you got?
I do.
Please state your names for the record.
Charles Conliff.
Jennifer Beam.
Jari Spiro.
Your professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. First order of business is approval of minutes from January 27, 2025, regular meeting. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Cabarucas, O'Donnell, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, Ryan, and Scottson. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second by Ann Marie. Roll call.
Hold on. Ann Marie is fine. I'm sorry. Who was the motion? Well, no, because sometimes you're listed, but you can't vote.
Oh, I'm so joking. Yeah, no, it's fine.
Yeah, so only seven can vote. But I need to know, who made the motion?
Hughes.
Thank you. So, Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Do we have any vouchers?
No vouchers this evening.
Correspondents?
Yes, first of all, case number BA 1915A for Squonkham Fire Company, which is on tonight's agenda, has to be rescheduled to March 10, 2025. They had an issue with their notice.
Okay.
We don't have to make an announcement because they'll be rescheduled, correct?
Correct.
And then I have a letter from Sal Alfieri for case number BA 2402 Zarelli Enterprises. He asks that they be carried to April 7, 2025 without further notice, and he granted the board an extension of time to April 30, 2025.
Okay.
So you need to make an announcement on that one?
Okay. Okay, anybody here for case number BA 2402 Zarelli Enterprise LLC? This application's going to be carried to April 7, 2025 without further notice. The board was granted an extension to April 30, 2025.
Okay, and the last item of correspondence was also from Sal Alfieri. It's regarding case number 2406, the Turkish-American application. He asked that that be carried to February 24, 2025 without further notice and granted an extension through February 28, 2025.
Okay. Anybody here for case number BA 24-06 Turkish-American Religious Foundation Incorporated? This application will be carried to February 24, 2025 without further notice, and the board was granted an extension of time to February 28, 2025.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Now, tonight, we were gonna hear, Oakland is scheduled for the second on the application, but because we are on a already hearing the case of the Third Avenue Associates, we're gonna go with that one first tonight, so we will get to that first, so the attorneys for that. I will read the notice on this as well. Case number BA 24-03 Third Avenue Associates Incorporated. Type of use is a variance in preliminary and final major site plan. The application of Third Avenue Associates Incorporated is an applicant and United Fellowship Baptist Church as owner seeking use variance in preliminary and final major site plan. Relieved to develop the current vacant property into a cemetery on premise known as Block 219, Lot 13, Adelphi Farmingdale Road. This application was partially heard on July 8, 2024, when it was carried to August 26, 2024 with no further notice. On August 26, 2024, this application was carried to September 23, 2024. On September 23, 2024, this application was partially heard and carried to November, I'm sorry, December 9, 2024. Exploration is February 10, 2025. The eligible voters are Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, Scottson, and Ryan. Do we have the attorneys?
Yes.
Okay.
John, you switched on me. Yeah, sorry. Oh, you want me to go to that side?
Okay, Ms. Jackson, you want to start?
Thank you, yes, good evening. Couple developments since the last time we were here. One of them is that Dr. Stankin, who's here again this evening, met with the Environmental Commission. They had an in-person meeting, and they spent some time, they went over some of the questions about environmental. I don't believe the commission gave any kind of objection or report. Dr. Stankin can testify, he believed that the meeting went very well. I think they were satisfied with the information that Dr. Stankin gave them, and I don't think they have any concerns, which I respectfully submit is pretty significant to this case. So we did, I think it was requested at the last hearing that we go and meet with them. We did, and I'm here to report that we think it went well.
Okay, Eileen, did we receive a letter from the environmental?
No, I never.
Okay.
Thank you. And also, we have a little bit of a difference. We have been in contact to get our environmental permit from the DEP, and we may have to scale back the lines of, you know, a little bit and reduce the application by 500 graves. We're still dealing with the DEP on that issue. Mr. Rob Siv can give further information. We ask that the board address the use variance, and in, and as we've submitted, keep in mind, we may be coming back to reduce it a little bit in scale, because that's where the DEP is at right now, and it has to do with, you know, where the wetlands are, that kind of thing. They do soil borings, and based on that, they make the determination of where the edges of the wetlands are. We can still negotiate or address that with them, we may, but it looks like, per where they're at right now, well, we're still working on it, but we might have a slightly smaller application, however, we can still do it. So anyway, I just want to alert the board to that, that development.
Okay.
And we have this evening an additional expert, Mr. John Ray, who is here to give testimony about traffic. At the last couple of hearings, I believe, the board and members of the public raised issue about traffic. We believe that was self-explanatory, that a cemetery is one of the lowest traffic generators that there is. Because it has become an issue, we would like to bring forward Mr. John Ray, licensed civil engineer, to give his brief assessment and testimony regarding the impact that this site will have on traffic when fully developed.
Okay, and then he'll be around in case there's questions from the public?
He will.
Okay.
You know what, I would just request, and again, defer to you, Frank Getchall, our expert, is here, and the, the audience was in the process of questioning him, and we'd respectfully request that he be allowed to finish his testimony so he can go back up to New Hampshire and take care of his family and.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Put our, like, appearances on the record, who you're representing. I know you were here before, but, I mean, it was like months ago, right?
Okay, yeah, it was back in September.
Yes.
Good evening, Edward Bernano Pringle Quinanzano, on behalf of the objectors in this case, and, you know, appearing on behalf of them, and just to reiterate what I said, Mr. Getchall was here, he was wrapping it up, and we finished, I think, maybe counsel has more questions on cross, but I think we'd gotten through direct and cross, and we were starting to take, and actually, we'd taken a number of questions from people in the audience, so we'd asked, and we just continue with Mr. Getchall, and if that's okay scheduling from your perspective, then he could just go.
Okay, then, Andy, who should go first in your?
Well, I think when you left off, I wasn't here that night, but I believe that's what Mr. Bernano's saying is true, right?
Yeah.
So I would continue with that.
And we have no objection to that.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You could plug in there, John.
So we'll need to swear him in and then get his credentials on the record.
Well, he'd been qualified.
Okay, I'm sorry. My apologies.
I think he's, right, you had, you'd been pre, you're still under oath, sir.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, he had further testimony. Okay, you said he had further testimony, right?
I just had, I had one follow-up question, but I think it was really, we brought him back primarily to.
Okay, but yeah, I just want to make sure if there's any questions that we, you have or any professionals before we open the public. Just wanted to. Anybody, professionals, have any further questions?
No.
Okay, we're gonna open up this to public, and these will be mostly for questions. You'll have time afterwards to make comments, so Eileen will open up.
Do we need to specify?
Yeah.
I think we need to specify that it was based on his initial testimony.
Yes.
At that time.
Okay.
And his testimony was in regard to the amount of decay of the body?
Yes.
In the ground, and the effect of the groundwater.
Yes.
Specifically on that.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a.
Right, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. I mean, this was in September, we're now in February? Maybe for, like, there should be some summary of.
Yeah, well, that's why I was, that was why I was trying to get.
And, if I may, I can ask Mr. Getchall to give, actually, if there's no objection, just give a brief overview of his qualifications again, and then a summary of his testimony, since as Mr. Baer indicated, it's been, whatever, five months, six months.
Okay, Ms. Jackson.
Mr. Chairman, of course, it's, it's the board's hearing, and as a chairman, you have a lot of discretion to conduct the hearing as you deem appropriate. However, I think having this witness restate his case puts my client at a distinct disadvantage because all of my clients testified one meeting and two meetings ago. So what it does is it puts his prior testimony, gives a particular emphasis, puts it right in the forefront, and, and it's all what the objectors were. I think it was mainly in accord with my client, but I, I think that's just a little unfair to my client to have the, the objectors' expert restate their testimony as a refresher to start the whole thing off when we don't have that same opportunity, so.
Okay, well.
I'm not gonna make a bigger deal out of it than that, I'll abide by your discretion, of course.
From YouTube, crazy Arab iron, Mike Tyson, a skull emoji, hashtag boxing, hashtag shorts, hashtag.
So.
If, yeah, we'd like to have the opportunity just to, for Mr. Getchall, just to.
Okay, what I'm suggesting, because there are people here tonight that may not have been there, even though they could have watched the video, just do a quick summary, and then we're not getting too far into a testimony. So go ahead.
My name is Frank Getchall, I'm a hydrogeologist with Weston and Sampson. I have over 40 years of experience working primarily in the Northeast, New Jersey, and New York especially. I've, my areas of expertise are.
I don't think they need to know your qualifications again. I think you could just summarize.
Yeah, just a summary.
Testimony.
Sure, that's fine. I think all I discussed had to do with the fact that a lot of natural burials are now being looked at relative to impacts on groundwater quality, especially over, say, the last 10 years, both in the Northeast as well as in Europe and other parts of the world, and that there has been expressed concern about contaminant, contamination of groundwater related to these types of cemeteries. I testified about some of the work that I've done elsewhere in cemeteries and in New Jersey with respect to groundwater flow, groundwater contamination. The aquifer here is a unconsolidated coastal plain sand with layers of silts and clay. Groundwater flow direction, based on at least what I've looked at, appears to be from the cemetery towards the Bogmarsh Brook. Any type, anything that enters the groundwater from that area will eventually make its way to that brook and into the aquifer underneath it. Regarding groundwater supply in the area, I made mention the fact that at least the ones that I'm aware of appear to be on the far side of the cemetery. However, just because they're up gradient doesn't mean that when the wells pump that they may not somehow be impacted by the groundwater from the cemetery. And really, what it comes down to is a very limited amount of information that is site-specific regarding the hydrogeology, and so conclusions regarding that have to be take with a certain grain of salt because they're not based on site-specific information. They're being based on generic information associated with that aquifer in the area.
Okay. Thank you very much. So at this time, I'd like to have a motion to go to open the public.
Motion to open the public.
Ann Marie's?
Second.
Second by Mike. Roll call, or just all in favor?
I agree.
Okay. Okay, Eileen, could you open a statement for the public?
At this time, the chairman's opened the hearing up for members of the public. Please come up one at a time to the podium, give your name and address, and you can ask questions of the expert.
This is for questions of the professional?
Yes, it's questions. We can make comments.
No comments.
Yes, no comments. So I want to get.
No comments.
Please, please don't shout from the audience, wait till you come up.
I'm just really familiar with the.
I need your name.
My name is Jeffrey Buck. I was at the first meeting, so I was signed in at, I mean, I, you were sworn in at that time.
Okay, so you're still under oath?
Okay, thank you. I just had, maybe it's not questions I should be up here for, it's knowledge about the properties that are adjacent to this proposed cemetery, and the conditions, the water runoff conditions, and, and what happens when we get a severe storm. Am I up here at the right time to talk about this?
Yeah, well, yeah, because it's really not turning into a question right now.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
That's under comments, you can come up and.
Yeah.
All the information that you have.
I would do it then, thank you. Anybody else has a question for this witness?
Please come up if you do.
My name is Michael Gatmanoff, I'm at 343 Squonkham Yellowbrook.
Did you testify or?
No, I didn't, sir.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you just spell your last name for me, please?
Jeez and George. E.T., M.A.N., O, the is in Victor.
Thank you.
Whether this is a comment or a question, it's a bit of both. I don't know if you're gonna want me to come back for this.
Okay, we'll try the question first, and then we can go from there.
Questions concerning Marshbok Brook is, it's in the middle of a wetland, right? The brook itself runs directly through the property. There's a Category 1 Waterway Act for, you know, water quality, and that requires by law a 300-foot buffer zone from the creek. So that's gonna be a 600-foot swatch through this land. Is there gonna be room after that? I, I, I heard you, sir, say there was gonna be adjustments to the variance, or I'm assuming.
I mean, that was something you said about, maybe you would have to cut it back a little.
Yeah, but Mr., procedurally, I don't know if this is questions for everybody, but Mr. Siv is certainly the one who can address that.
Okay, well, wait.
I don't know if this is for this witness or.
Is it for this witness, because we gotta, if that's not the case, then I would suggest coming back up.
Well, I, you, well.
Yeah.
I guess we could ask this witness, did he consider the, the brook?
Yeah.
And whether that impacted his opinion at all, in general, right?
I mean, I could bring this back up, but I also have well water myself, and I'm situated between Marshbok Brook and the Madison River.
Okay, but my question is, is this witness going to be having bearing on your question, or is it gonna be a general question for somebody else?
I guess he'd have to determine that.
Okay, we'll ask the question, then we'll have the witness. Go ahead.
All right, yeah, as I am situated between Marshbok Brook and the Madison River there, and have well water.
Excuse me, could you just make sure you speak into the mic, because I have to be able to.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So what is the likelihood that my well is gonna be impacted from that, or?
Really depends on the location. Without some sort of a map, an idea of a scale, I really can't say, but there's always the potential, if you are down gradient, down slope of the cemetery, that groundwater that is originating at that property is groundwater that could contribute to your well. But it really depends on the location. Without a map, I, I can't say more than that.
Okay.
I have a general idea of where you're talking about, and it sounds like you would be down gradient.
Yeah, I am.
So, and then the question comes down to what actually is in the groundwater, what clean or other groundwater it mixes with, you know, to say, but if you're down gradient and you're close enough, there is potential.
Would that variant that I spoke of, the, the buffer zone, like the 300 feet on the other side of it, would that have any effect on that? I mean, or would it happen regardless?
I believe the buffer zone is really more a control on what they do. It's more of a focus on protecting that stream in the riparian corridor. It's not a focus on the groundwater quality as it pertains to say.
It's still gonna affect the groundwater.
Something goes in the water on the property, it's going to affect, whether it's an adverse effect or not, it really depends on a lot of other factors, but it's, you know, if I drop something here and it makes its way into the water, it's gonna mix with it. Beyond that, without more specifics, it's kind of hard for me to say.
Should we have the specifics?
All right.
Okay.
Sorry.
So you'll come back and we can, you can ask for.
Comments for this.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tom Klein, I've already been previously sworn in, I realize I'm still under oath. So I just have one question. You were speaking about aquifers, and obviously, you know, the penetration into that aquifer, right, and we, as you previously testified, not knowing which kind of effect it's going to have on it, it will get into the groundwater in the aquifer eventually at some point, correct?
Correct. Anything that enters the groundwater or the subsurface at that location, if it makes its way into the saturated zone, is by definition affecting the groundwater.
Thank you. And that aquifer that we're talking about that is underneath, right, the cemetery, that would be the same aquifer that would be feeding the wells of these families, is that correct?
That's the, I believe it's the Lower Kirkwood Cohansi, and so as long as those wells are, say, completed within anywhere from 50 to 100 feet, that's the same aquifer that they would be drawing their water out of.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Nancy Donio, 79, Varden Way. I have not been sworn in.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you just spell your last name?
D.O.N.I.O. Nancy. I just have a question. If you could elaborate, you said you spoke previously, unfortunately, I wasn't here for that meeting and I didn't watch it. You spoke previously about contaminants getting into the water from other, or there's concerns about contaminants. Can you elaborate on what type of contaminants?
Well, we had, there was another expert who also had testified primarily based on, you know, body degradation, primarily with respect to things like bacteria and viruses and so forth, but there are also other, I hate to use the term contaminants, but there are constituents in, in the body that don't go through the same process as far as being absorbed in the soil. They actually will, over time, make their way into the groundwater. Things such as nitrate, sodium, phosphorus, there, you know, and then, of course, you also have the situation with respect to if there are bodies or people that go and say through chemotherapy, medications and so forth, any of those types of compounds could make their way into the groundwater also.
Okay, so is it not true that the State of New Jer, the State of New York Health Department does in fact test their waterways and their wastewater for polio? They also test it for measles, and they also test it for COVID?
Yes, they do.
Okay, and all of those can, through this avenue, find their way into the water system that is not just feeding wells, but is also feeding the Madison River, which is the drinking water for quite a large population in Monmouth County?
They can get into the groundwater on the property in terms of their fate and transport from that point. The further they have to go, the less of the impact, but it also depends on the amount of concentration. So from a theoretical standpoint or conceptual standpoint, if it gets in the groundwater, it's gonna follow the groundwater flow direction, and then what happens as it moves away from the site, it may mix with clean water, it may mix with other impacted water, so it's hard to say, you know, when you start getting further away.
Okay, so now, let's say there is another COVID type of an exposure, we have an enormous amount of population that needs to be buried at that site, it does in fact impact the drinking water, now we're adding in chemicals to counteract the drinking water, and it seems to me that all we're doing is chemicalizing and chemicalizing and chemicalizing, and that's something that I have very serious concerns about. As a woman, I have numerous friends in my neighborhood who have had breast cancer. We don't need more chemicals in our water, we need less, so please consider that. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Sir, you mentioned that, the, you call them contaminants in the body. These aren't contaminants necessarily, right? They're.
They're compounds in the battery, but when they actually wind up in the groundwater, they actually, some of them are actually classified as contaminants. They have an MCL.
But items like nitrate, that's a natural, naturally occurring thing.
Not necessarily.
What about sodium?
Not necessarily.
Nitrate is in fertilizer, right?
It is.
Somebody fertilizes their lawn, that goes into the groundwater as well.
Yes, it does.
That's the same thing in a decomposing body.
Depends on what the concentration is.
Same thing with sodium. Sodium gets on the salt, right?
Yes, it does.
They put salt all over the roads. You go out there, you'll crunch walking out to your car. That's salt, right?
Yes, it is.
Same thing. Do you think one shovel of salt that they throw on the front steps in front of the Howell Township Municipal Complex comes close to the amount of salt in the human body when it decomposes?
I didn't really give you an opinion one way or the other, if I did thought you think that.
Well, you referred to it as a contaminant when it comes out of a decomposing body, correct?
If it's something that doesn't naturally occur in the groundwater, okay, at a particular location, but it's introduced, then it gets classified as a contaminant.
Well, let's talk about.
Now, if you want to talk about it originating in the human body, okay, when it's in the human body, yes, it's a, it's a constituent, it's a compound. It's when it leaves that human body and it enters the groundwater, and it wasn't there to be. before, it's a contaminant.
So your concern is that the nitrates and the sodium and the phosphorus, phosphorus is another thing that's in dishwasher detergent, correct?
It is.
It's in laundry detergent. When you wash your car, phosphorus is part of that.
Yep.
So these are all items that people routinely use. And when they wash their car, it goes into the storm drain, correct?
Maybe some people does, I don't know. Depends on where they wash it.
Well, that, if you wash your car, if you wash your boat, if you put salt on for your lawn, you put fertilizer on your lawn, that makes its way into the storm, the storm drain, right?
And there's a reason why all those compounds are regulated.
Does that make its way into the storm drain typically?
It could, it could.
It could.
Yep.
So let's say it rains, right? And the rain takes some of those contaminants into the water system. That goes right into the rivers, right? Goes right into the streams and rivers. That's where stormwater management goes.
Doesn't necessarily. If it goes into the ground, it goes into the groundwater.
All right. And your, but your concern was that if this contamination, nitrate, sodium and phosphates, makes its way into the groundwater, you said that that could ultimately find its way into the, into the waterway. And I think that's what your concern was.
It could.
It could, but it does when it's on the front steps of the Howe Municipal Complex, correct?
I'm, I'm not really familiar with the stormwater here as far as where it goes. But if it goes into a storm drain, it goes into some sort of a management facility?
You, you mentioned chemical, medical compounds and they could make their way into the groundwater, right? When, when someone is under chemotherapy or they have some kind of medical treatment. You've never done any studies about the decomposition or whether that can migrate from a human body into groundwater, have you?
No, I'm actually involved in reviewing other people's studies on that.
That's a no?
I haven't sampled the cemetery.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think this goes a little beyond the question.
I, I just have one of, well, this is cross-examination based on the questions that were raised. His testimony in response to the questioning was, oh, this can go into the groundwater. I think that needs to be explored because it's not that simple. So with all due respect, I'd like to make the record. I, I just have one more question.
Okay, one more because it is public.
Thank you. Sir, you're familiar with Evergreen Cemetery, correct?
Yes.
And that's a much larger cemetery than my client proposes?
I've been over there. In terms of size, I don't know.
And that's been there for many years?
That's my understanding, yes.
Have you studied any of the waterways, wells or downstream features associated, downstream of that cemetery to see if your theories bear out?
No, I have not, but that's also why I made the recommendations for putting in observation and honor to wells regarding.
That's all I have, thank you for right now.
If I may, I'd like to do a redirect here. And I think, I know it was the public session, but there was a cross-examination. I'd like to be able to do a redirect.
Okay, yeah, let's close, we're going to close the public and then you can do a redirect quickly because.
Okay.
Hold on, one more.
I just wanted to clarify. My questions weren't necessarily about naturally occurring contaminants. They're more specifically about viruses and bacterials.
Okay.
Because those you can actually test. New York State tests their water regularly for polio.
Is this a question or testimony right?
It's not a question, but it is student.
It is a clarification.
Okay, it's student noted.
Questions, not testimony.
So.
All right. So just as a clarification, thank you.
Any more questions, Richard? Okay.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the zoning board. I just had a couple of questions for.
Were you sworn in, Mark?
Yes, my name's Mark Parisi, Two Castle Court. Just had a couple of questions for.
I'm sure, sure. Please spell your last name.
Parisi, P-A-R-I-S-I. Mark, M-A-R-C. And you're Mr. Jackson representing the applicant?
I am.
All right, is it okay if I ask you questions on behalf of applicant?
I don't think this is a time.
No, 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 Mark. Just for this witness.
Just the witness, Mark.
Witness?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then I'll, I'll come back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we supposed to, for this part of the question?
Have a second, armed favor. Okay.
Just a couple of redirect questions, if I may. Mr. Gettle, you were talking about, you mentioned contaminants, decomposing, the decomposing body and contaminants from the decomposing bodies getting into groundwater, getting into the aquifer. You were not just talking about, you know, sodium and, and nitrogen. You're also talking about chemicals in the body, meaning medicines, various types of medicines, right?
Correct.
What are some of the medicines that you'd be, could you explain more about the medicines in the body that would be released from the body when the body is decomposing?
Well, there are different types of pharmaceuticals that people may be taking for health reasons. Any of those obviously are artificial, so if they get into the groundwater, they're going to continue. I mean, as an example, caffeine is commonly being found in groundwater. Okay, I'm not going to call that a medicine, but a lot of people drink coffee. And they find it in groundwater, they find it in springs, depending on where they're being discharged and so forth. So I'll just put that one out there, it's just an example.
There's something else, there's a compound called, and I don't know off the top of my head the acronym, but PFAS.
Oh, yes.
Something is being regulated now by the EPA. Can you tell us about that and about the potential for that being in a human body and getting released from the body when the body is decomposing?
Well, there are six compounds regulated currently. There's actually part of a family of about 3,000. They're fluorinated fluorocarbons that were made for things like fire retardation, A triple F, which is anybody who's in a fire department, they use it as a foam to put fires out and so forth. These compounds are recalcitrant. When they get into the groundwater, they don't break up. They primarily are dealt with either absorbing to, and they get far enough away, absorbing to like naturally occurring organic carbon, they get diluted and so forth. But they are regulated. Standards for those are down around 10 parts per trillion. Some of these other things we're talking about are regulated to parts per million. So it's a, they're obviously of a, of a serious concern. They're showing up in wastewater, they show up in streams, they're very ubiquitous because they're so commonly used with just about everything. And they get absorbed by the body and they can stay in the body from days to weeks to years. So that is another compound.
And with the PFAS, for those compounds, would they increase over time in the body? I guess it's called geodrification so that you'd have a greater concentration that could be released from the body when it's decomposing?
I believe the studies now show that they do over time if you were just, if someone was able to stop, but they're so common in so many things that we use and eat and drink that the chances of, you know, weaning away from them are, are pretty slim. But if you were not, if you were not exposed to them, they will over time actually purge out of the body.
And a question was asked by counsel about the Evergreen Cemetery up the, up the road. You haven't studied that, right?
No.
And is your understanding that the vaults or the graves are vaulted at that cemetery?
That's my understanding. It's more of a conventional cemetery where they have, you know, the coffins go in vaults.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Okay.
Couple of follow-ups based on that, if I may?
Yeah, real quick.
The, you used the word, what, what were these compounds called again? I didn't quite get the letters.
EFAS, it's a family of compounds.
EFAS compound. You used the term ubiquitous, right? That means everywhere.
They find them everywhere, yes.
And you said they're in the food we eat?
Yep.
And they could get in the ground if somebody had them in their body and they were buried?
If they were able to come in contact with the groundwater, yes.
And you gave so many parts per million, show up in wastewater, you said standards, you didn't indicate what the standards were, what the, where it was from, but you just said standards, you know, call for less than 10 parts per million. But you also said that they were everywhere.
Parts per trillion.
Per trillion. So can you give any statistical data as to what kind of an impact in a percentage basis? Let's say there were 100 bodies that had these PFASs in the ground and they contaminated over the course of 100 years. Since these compounds are everywhere, how much would it raise it in, in the parts per trillion?
Well, unfortunately, the research on the PFAS compounds only started about 2014, 2015.
But you don't know.
They've been in use since World War II. And so over time, now all the studies are starting to, start to look at them because they are finding them everywhere.
So this board, in your view, should deny a religious cemetery the ability to allow people of a certain religious background to have a ceremonial burial because of compounds that are in everything everybody eats, that are everywhere, that are ubiquitous, might get into the groundwater and could have an impact in an, in an amount that you can't define downstream?
I don't think I made any recommendation to denying the application. All I'm doing is stating exactly what's out there and what research currently shows. And, you know, it could be whether or not a septic system, it could be a cemetery. All I'm saying is these compounds are showing up everywhere and they might even already be on the property.
The, the last thing you were questioning about a vault, right? A burial vault versus just in the ground?
Yes.
You agree that burial vaults are going to fill up with water and everything's going to seep out of a burial vault in time, no matter what?
Not necessarily.
The concrete lasts forever?
It's above the water table.
You know that those burial vaults are waterproof?
Usually there's a seal on them.
Usually, okay. All right, thank you, I have nothing further.
Okay.
So, Mr. Gettle, do you say?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask Mr. Gettle a clarifying question?
Go ahead, Charles.
So I think the applicant's professional or expert gave some testimony regarding equating a certain amount of the burial sites to like a septic system, right? And a septic system traditionally in the state of New Jersey, there's usually a separation requirement to seasonal water table. And my understanding of it is it's to provide a filtering aspect of through the soil media before it hits the groundwater. You know, so say in an instance where you didn't have that separation and this, you know, contaminants, say, is introduced right directly into the groundwater, does the aquifer continue to filter the soils as a hydrologist? Do you, does it?
So what happens if you're above the water table, the groundwater surface, you pretty much have a vertical type migration, a little bit of lateral spread. But because it's not in a saturated condition, a lot of the microbes that actually occur in the soil can do what they do and you get a filtering process. Once you go into the water, into the groundwater, some of those processes still take place, but then what also takes place is groundwater moves. So whereas it's kind of taking its time going through the soil column on its way down to the groundwater, if there's a gradient and the groundwater is moving away, the process doesn't have the same chance, it doesn't take, doesn't go at the same slow rate as it does because the groundwater is moving it along.
So there may be filtering even though it's in the groundwater, but it may just not be as effective as if it was in the unsaturated zone?
Right, and there's a lot of factors that come into play. Things like, you know, what's the total organic carbon that's down in the aquifer materials? Is it a silt? Is it a sand? Is it a clay and so forth?
So, and then, you know, I think both you and the applicant's expert did some review of outside studies and overseas and things like that. The type of natural burial, that's not something that's strictly unique to one culture or religious, you know, group, correct?
No, it's not.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you stopping in again.
Thank you.
Safe trip.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any further witnesses?
I have no other witnesses.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, you had to bring up a few more people.
Yes, thank you. I was going to have Mr. Ray come forward. For the traffic analysis.
Mr. Ray, you were already on sworn in and on?
No, no, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. My bad.
You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to the public?
I do.
State your name for the record, spell your last.
John Ray, R-E-A.
Mr. Ray, could you give the board your credentials and background in the field of engineering and traffic?
I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My field of specialty is traffic engineering. I have a total now of 50 years' experience in the traffic engineering field, the last 40 of which have been doing consulting work here in the state of New Jersey. I've appeared before many planning and zoning boards throughout the state, including this board, but there are some new members, so that's the short version.
Okay, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, there's, there's been some question about the, the traffic impact of a cemetery such as our client proposes. Can you just advise the board your assessment, analysis, what kind of traffic will be generated? How does it compare to other uses? And with the chairman's permission, I'd just like him to explain in narrative form as if he were just telling the board.
Okay.
Well, first off, it's quite unusual for me to be called upon to do a traffic study or testimony regarding the traffic impact of a cemetery for reasons which I think we all basically understand. As a matter of fact, in the last 40 years, I went back and I looked through my job list and only three times was I asked to do a traffic study in 40 years for a cemetery. One was a expansion of a cemetery in Holmdell. Another one was for an expansion of a cemetery in West Long Branch. And the third study was for a, a new cemetery that the Diocese of Trenton was proposing in Hamilton Township. So it's very unusual for me to talk about the traffic impact from a cemetery. But basically, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is our professional organization, which compiles traffic data from all different land uses and publishes that data so that we can do traffic impact studies, you know, looking through the ITE data, a cemetery of a little over 10, if I'm not mistaken, 10 square, 10,000 square feet? What's the, 10, 10 acres, excuse me, 10.25 acres. So we use the acreage of the cemetery in order to determine how much traffic it's going to generate. The cemetery of this size, when it's built out, will generate approximately five trips that are coincident with the peak hours on Adelphia Farmingdale Road. Pretty low impact. And that's when it's built out. So, you know, from a land use perspective, there are very few land uses that will generate less traffic than a cemetery. It certainly will not have a significant impact on the county road. And I guess the last thing I wanted to say was I did, Mr. Siv, our engineer, has filed an application with the county because Adelphia Farmingdale Road is County Route 524. He's received some preliminary feedback from the county with respect to traffic issues and there is nothing there that he can't resolve and take care of. So it appears as though the county is going to give us an access permit for the driveway, should this board approve the application.
You said five trips, is it five trips a day or a week?
No, during, coincident with the peak hour, which would be based on the historical NJDOT data for this road, seven to eight o'clock in the morning is the peak hour in the morning and four to five o'clock in the afternoon. And I would also point out that I, it appears to me that most of the burials and the, the funerals that would be held at the site would be outside of the normal peak hours on Adelphia Farmingdale Road. And that basic, that's basically it. I don't have a lot more to say.
Okay, professionals, any questions?
Not so much a question, but a statement. I think you heard testimony regarding the number of vehicles on a typical service and I think it was 15 to 20. This is going back to the, the first meeting over the summer. You know, I would also just, you know, I don't think there's anything restricting a user, should they, board act favorably and they decide to operate from the site, from scheduling burial services, from not occurring during the peak hour. Would any of your testimony change as far as impact to the surrounding network if the 15 to 20 cars occurred, a service occurred during those peak hour periods?
It would still have a minimal impact. Usually when the burial services are held, there is traffic control provided by the funeral directors, so it wouldn't have an impact on my testimony.
So, and I know it was brought up at the first hearing for this application, but there were numerous prior land use approvals for this site that, I don't know whether they were fully perfected or whether their approvals have lapsed, but there was a house of worship of worship at one point approved for this, and I think it was 200-plus parking spaces.
Yeah.
You know, our current ordinance, I think it's 1 for 3 for houses of worship as far as parking requirements, so, you know, for 200-plus, you're looking at 60, 70 parking spaces. So compared to other uses, you know, from a traffic generation perspective, it's certainly less impactful, so I don't necessarily take exception to any miseries testimony.
Okay, Jennifer?
I just have one question, John. So would the completion of the construction at the intersection of Yellowbrook Road, which is a little bit farther to the northwest, I guess, which has a commercial component, 72 single-family homes and 10 apartments, would the completion of that project change your testimony with respect to the impact that this site would have on 524?
Not with respect to the impact the cemetery would have, I'm unfamiliar with that application, but...
It's under construction, it's old.
Okay. But the cemetery is what the cemetery is with respect to its impact on 524. I was unaware of the fact that there was a previous approval for apparently a house of worship. Certainly that would generate a higher traffic impact than a cemetery.
Okay, John?
Only because I don't know the answer to the question, does your study take into account, because I hear repeatedly, the traffic that's generated for a service, are there any other times of year or are there any holidays or traditions where there would be site visits to the cemetery other than just for a burial? And is that accounted for in your traffic study? My client, Arthur Schwartz, who's a rabbi, testified to that, I could bring him up, he has more of the knowledge of the particular customs. If, with your permission, I could have him come up and address that.
Yeah, I think, I think it is an important question, so I would ask...
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Arthur Schwartz, I appeared before the board, I've already given testimony, so...
So you're still under affirmation?
I'm still under affirmation, yes.
And, and, just, you're, if you could just give me 10 seconds, this is your labor of the heart, right, to?
That's correct. I intend to donate the cemetery to, for charitable causes.
All right, and so in that capacity, you went to the township, you got the approval that the township gave, this has been your project all along?
That's correct.
You're, in addition to being an attorney, being the applicant here, you're also a rabbi?
That's correct.
So you're familiar with the customs of religious Jewish people?
Yes, I am.
Can you please answer the question, are there any special days, special customs, special rituals that would have a particular impact on the number of people that come to the cemetery?
As I testified previously, there will be no chapel on premise. All the services, all the services that are performed beforehand are usually done at a chapel. Very few people come to the actual burial site for the interment of the grave site. Usually you don't have more than a dozen cars that are present. We anticipate approximately two funerals a week, and that will be after years and years of the cemetery being open. Cemeteries are generally built long-term, far in advance, possibly decades down the road before the cemetery is in full use. The question that I'm being asked is, when do, are there any other times besides the actual grave site ceremony that takes place? Yes, parents, relatives, close friends come to visit the grave site occasionally. Usually they do it before the high holy holidays and on the date that the deceased passed away, there is a tradition. It happens for the first generation, after someone passes away, they usually come to the grave site. Second generation's a little bit more distant, the third generation, they rarely come to the grave site. Very, very small traffic, especially in a new cemetery, I don't believe there'll be more than 50 visits a year preliminarily. As time goes by, as the cemetery grows in size, you'll have more visitors and people that want to come and say their last respects to the, to this deceased and remember them, happens. But very, very small traffic, again, as I mentioned before, generally during a burial, most of the, most of the ceremony takes place at the chapel. Very few people come to the actual grave site, they've already been at the services at the chapel, and it's only very close family, friends, relatives that attend the burial service. I don't anticipate any, any traffic issue that should arise, and as, this is an emotional, this is an emotional matter for me, I've spent a couple of years working on the project. We selected this area specifically because it's, it's out of, there's a, there's a railroad track on one side, there's another cemetery on the other side. I thought it was the ideal location, in particular, as I mentioned before in my previous testimony, Howell is becoming increasingly Jewish residence, more and more people, Jewish people, Orthodox Jewish people are moving into Howell. There's going to be a great need one day for a cemetery, and there is no Jewish cemetery in Howell in presence. It's something that's going to be needed, and something that thousands of people are going to benefit from it. This is not a commercial enterprise, this is something that we hope, funerals are very expensive today, and something my hope is to keep the cost down for the funeral so people have a place to be buried. We're all going to need it one way or the other. Any other questions?
That's all I have, because I've answered, because, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Arthur.
Anybody from the board has any questions for Mr. Ray? Nope, I guess we're good.
You can take that with you. You're finished. Oh, so the public have questions for Mr. Ray? I don't know if...
I have no questions, and...
Here's the thing, do we want to try to do the questions? Would he be able to stay, or would you?
I'll sit.
How many more people do you have, John?
We're finished.
You don't have any more?
We do not have any more witnesses.
Oh, okay.
Public?
Let's have one more question to go.
Yes.
Did he want to cross or not?
No, no.
Go to 10 minutes.
I think what we're going to do then, if you're all done, we'll do the, public can come up, they can ask him questions, but most of it's going to be comments, so let's get the, let's get started on that. If you have no objections?
I have no objections.
Okay, you're good.
Motion to open for the chair.
Mr. Hughes, next, second, on favor, okay. Eileen?
At this time, the chairman's opened up the hearing for questions of Mr. Ray, the traffic expert, or comments, or I guess questions of anybody else. So just come up one at a time, give your name and address, you'll be sworn out.
I have a question.
Have you testified before?
What? No, I haven't.
You swear or affirm the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name for the record.
Michael Bernstein, 3 Colleen Court, but the other name that I want you to put onto the record is Malek Yakov Ben Yahuda. You'll understand why. So I have a couple of questions for you, if that's okay, sir.
I don't think I have any choice, no doubt.
How many Jewish funerals have you been to?
Can you just...
Several.
Several, okay.
Make sure you speak into the microphone.
How many Jewish funerals have you been to?
I've been to several.
Okay. How many of them only had 12 cars?
Quite frankly, I don't recall.
Okay. Have you ever seen a Jewish funeral when, God forbid, when a rabbi passes away? How many, how many cars?
I think there was one in New York City years ago where they had traffic tied up for Menachem Schneerson.
Exactly, exactly.
That's the only one I can think of.
It's something that happens, unfortunately, people die, they do, okay? So these funerals, they can be a lot more cars. I have been to, I don't know how many Jewish funerals, I have never seen one limited to 12 cars. We're talking 30, 40, 50 cars, okay? Please understand that. I'm not saying that the rabbi was being, you're not being truthful, okay, but maybe we go to different funerals. So, thank you very much, I really just wanted to ask that, but there may be much bigger funerals.
Mr. Bernstein, if you, if you really want the record to reflect your Hebrew name, then you're going to have to...
Don't ask me to spell it.
Okay, well maybe say it's, maybe say it's Shari has it.
Okay, never mind.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein.
We can get the Ben part of that. Right?
Wow, that's impressive.
Shari's on top of it. Thank you.
Good evening.
Sworn in.
Okay.
Okay, my name is Joyce Antonelli, 27 West Farms Road, Ryadaman Ranch. I also have a well.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes.
And state your name, spell your last, even though I think you did say it.
Okay, Joyce Antonelli.
Yes.
A-N-T-O-N-E double L-I.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Antonelli.
Okay, so I have a horse farm. With my number of horses that I have on the property, my manure, I have to manage it, and I have to have it taken away because of manure leaching into the waterway, and I'm nowhere near the wetlands that these are. Now, I have walked through these wetlands, and they're filled with piliated woodpeckers, which were recently just taken off the endangered species list and downgraded to the threatened species list, okay? And the reason why they were endangered was because of loss of habitat. Now, I grew up in West Long Branch, okay? The whole area there has changed over the years, we used to have horse farms and stuff, now we have blacktop. The other thing is, is that for 32 years, I was an operating room nurse. We handled chemo, you need a personal protective wear, gloves and stuff, because the chemo can come through your skin and contaminate you. Our anesthesia drugs even baited on that, we cleaned the skin with, we couldn't put it down the drain anymore. It was leaching into the waterways from the sewer, and it was contaminating the fish. People fish at the Masquan River Reservoir. When you drive around town, they're parking their trucks at the tributaries and fishing. They're going to be consuming that stuff. Nobody's going to know what happened, maybe not this generation, you might all be gone, but future generations are going to be impacted severely. So I don't have a problem with Jewish people moving into this town, but this is an inappropriate site. They have to go someplace where it's more upland or whatever, and you just have to think about, you know, other generations. It's not a racist thing or nothing like that, but it's just not the right place, all right? There's a lot of, that's a big ecosystem. I don't see why the township, especially with that woodpecker in there, can't buy that. They're buying tracts of land all over town to preserve it. Buy it, all right? That's taxpayers' money that'll go to something good and will benefit the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one brief question for this witness, if I may, or a couple. Can we put on slide number two up there?
What are you looking for? What's the name of the, of the presentation?
It's just that.
That, go to page two.
It's number two.
The aerial one? It's in the PowerPoint, page two.
I thought that was in the PowerPoint.
Give me a second, it's a little slow. Can you state your address again, just so we know?
27 West Farms Road.
I apologize, the computer's freezing up on me. Your PowerPoint, please.
Is, is your intention to find out where she lives compared to the site, is that what the whole purpose is?
Not exactly.
Just asking.
Yeah, not exactly, just, the PowerPoint should be in there. It's here, it's not, it's not, it's locking up the computer for some reason.
Maybe we can ask a question about it?
John, here's a hard copy.
I have hard copies, everyone does, but I want to put it up on the screen.
Yeah, but I can't, it's locked. It won't, I can't grab it. Do you have the email?
Mr. Chair, maybe we take a five-minute break while we try to figure out...
Yeah, let's do that, Eileen.
Takes the pressure off.
The board will take a five-minute recess, they'll be back at 10 after eight. The board will now reconvene.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, I guess we're back to you with the...
Yes, Ms. Joyce, I think, is that your first name or your last name?
Yeah, her first name.
I'm sorry, that's all I got when I wrote it down, I don't mean to disrespect her. Just, we've put an image up, it's an aerial image of the area. You can see West Farms Road on the, kind of to the right, right? That's where your farm is?
Yeah.
And, kind of in the middle of the green, up by West Farm Road, that's where our proposed site is, it isn't identified there, but you know that, right? It's like, right where it says Adelphia Farmingdale Road, kind of under that?
Right.
And, so, that big green area that's like in little checkers, that's Evergreen, right?
Okay.
And you drive by that every day when you come and go from, from your farm to Adelphia Farmingdale Road?
Yep.
And you've never had to wait for traffic there, right?
Sometimes I do.
Sometimes you do? And the contaminants from there, they haven't affected your quality of life from that grave site?
No, but like I said, they're in vaults and it's totally different, and it is upland.
When you, when you say sometimes, you do have to wait for the traffic at Evergreen, how often is that? What sometimes mean?
We have a lot of traffic in the area now because it's been built up quite a bit. There's been more developments, there's a strip mall going up and everything, there's more people moving into the area. So, yes, in the town of Howell, there has definitely been more traffic.
No, that's not what I'm talking about, I'm asking about Evergreen Cemetery.
From the cemetery?
You said sometimes you have to wait for traffic there. When you say sometimes, what do you mean by that?
Well, if there's a funeral or something.
How often does that happen? That you've had to wait for a funeral procession?
I don't know, I never really, really noticed. I could be on my property and not leave my property for an entire week unless I need food, because I'm busy working over there.
That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, before we hear anybody else from public, I just want to remind everybody, you can come up and ask a question, but if the question's been asked, we ask that you hold back, because I want to get everybody an opportunity to talk with their comments, so make sure you try to keep within the five minutes. We're not going to be with a stopwatch, but we just want to respect all the people here in this room, that they all get a chance to come up, okay? Thanks.
Hi, I'm Kristin Kearns, and I live in 13 West Main Street on the county road. Hi.
Hi. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do, thank you so much. I wanted to talk a little bit about something that I don't think has been brought up before, so apologies if it has, but I was going to go to our guy here who knows a lot about traffic.
I live on the West Main Street, and I actually live next door neighbors to our crossing guards, just adorable, every morning I hear, "Have a good morning." Kids walk to school. I moved to Farmingdale from Point Pleasant, I had a small community there. The reason that I moved to Farmingdale is for the same reason, so I can send my kids to school and not have to worry about people driving through, flying by, we put up the speed bumps. This actually has helped, thank you. Someone hit my house one time, drunk. I mean, it's, it just, it happens all the time. This is going to cause so much traffic, I don't care what anyone has to say, I work from home, I see it every single day, people are stupid speeding. With your research that you did on the area that this is being proposed, do you know if all of, about the action response times, if there was to be an accident, and what that looks like? Because Farmingdale does not have a police department, I don't know if you knew that.
Not my field of expertise.
Got it, but if there was an accident, do you know what this response time would be?
I do not, I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Play up.
You can come up, yeah, please. I know you've been sworn, so, go ahead.
Stephen Meyer, 56 Adelphia Road. First off, you spoke about decomposition of a body, and you keep using the term a body. You don't have one burial, in fact, I even argue with what the rabbi said, I believe in the first meeting, you testified up to eight bodies, eight burials a week, not just two. two. If we were to use, say, five burials a week with a weight of about 120 pounds per body, you're looking at about 15 ton a year, which just keeps compounding as time goes on. Now, the remains from those bodies drains downhill. I mean, the water that collects is going to take it down, it's going to take it right into the wetlands, down between the graves and the tracks, from there into Marsh Bog Brook. Marsh Bog Brook is a C1 stream. The C1 stream is a designation given to it by the state for water quality, not just water quality, but that's your drinking water. The buffer for that is not 300 but 500 foot, and that's shown on the plan. It takes about one hour at the rate that the stream flows for water to go from that site to the intake on Hospital Road. We keep talking about the reservoir. The reservoir is just storage. Your water is taken from two sources. It comes directly from the Masquon, and it comes from a series of wells. From the Masquon is at Hospital Road, the water is there and is given a quick treatment, and anybody who has a Brita filter on city water, you see how often you have to change that. The filtration is not that effective. They treat it to federal standards. And if that's what you're willing to live with, then you're going to be drinking their dead. The problem here is that if this is approved, and you find that we're right and you made a mistake, there is no fixing this. There is no way you're going to be able to go in and remove a cemetery. Not just the political pressure, but what it would take to physically remove and clean the soil is well beyond what this town could afford to do. The, oh, what else did I have? I'm trying to keep this as short as possible, so, I know you said five minutes, I'm actually...
Yeah, I'm just looking at your neighbors, but, you know, continue.
I'll, I'll keep it short.
Okay.
The, let's see, we already did for us a number of graves. The problem, when bodies decompose, I'm not, I don't argue with their expert, that is a very good description of how the bodies decompose, but also their expert testified that the water draining from this site will go into Marsh Bog Brook, and from there, it is going to go downhill, also into the wetlands. You have kids play in those, in that water. And if you've ever seen the reports on TV when you have various disasters, one of the things they're concerned with is contamination in the water with things like dysentery, typhoid, and diseases like that. You run the risk with decomposing bodies running into there, that you're going to expose the kids, or the chance of this. The last thing I really want to address, the applicant's attorney used the term when he made his presentation of inherently, that cemeteries are all inherently beneficial. The general use cemeteries are. This is a select-use cemetery. It's not all Jews can be buried there. This is primarily for the ultra-orthodox to use. They prefer not to be buried with a mixed cemetery. I mean, it's religious preferences, and I'm not going to argue that, but it's also not inherently beneficial. Inherently beneficial was defined with Sica V Wall Township back in the 80s as for the general community's good. This serves a small portion of a community, not the entire. And when it comes to the argument being made of, we'll allow anyone in who is Jewish, you have to get a good definition of who they're considering to be Jewish. Because from my understanding, my wife isn't considered Jewish because she is not ultra-orthodox. She's conservative. So, it's, that designation, I'm not going to argue it with them. I'll leave that, if this goes to appeal, let the judge make the final determination on it. But I do want it brought out on the record so that if this does go to appeal, the judge can only consider what has been raised in issue. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Meyer, thank you. Good evening.
Hello, Nancy Donio, again, 79 Varden Way. A couple of things. One, Evergreen Cemetery, I believe, is a cemetery that is predominantly built out. It was started forever ago, as far as I'm aware. I've been in Monmouth County, unfortunately, for 56 years, and Evergreen Cemetery has been here for as long as I've been here, if not longer.
They actually wrote us a letter saying that they've been operating for over 100 years.
Thank you. So, it's predominantly built out. So, the traffic that you were questioning the, the previous woman about is not necessarily cemetery traffic, because it's predominantly built out. So, you're going to see more of those people coming on the holidays and coming to visit, and of course, on Memorial Day and on Flag Day, when the Boy Scouts come and put out their flags. This is a new cemetery. The other thing that you'll notice on the map that is up, all of the dark green buffer that is around Evergreen Cemetery, that will very quickly disappear with this project. You lose that buffer zone. That's one. Two, forget about the woodpeckers. Three, you also need to maintain that cemetery. How is it going to be maintained? Evergreen is more of a natural cemetery. At most, they mow. What kind of maintenance is going to be taking place on this cemetery? Will they be putting fertilizer down? Will, there'll be stuffed animals and things that will blow away into the wind, further contaminating the water stream and the buffer zone, that will be minimalized because of this project. My third is for the traffic engineer. If there is a very large funeral, can we get part of this project signs on 542, on 524, saying "No Parking"? Because that section of the road is 40 miles an hour, double solid line, and my fear is people are going to be parking on the side of that road.
The answer is yes, you can get no parking signs. It would be something the township council...
Not the township, the county would have to do, yes? It's a county road.
The county will go along with whatever the town wants. If the town passes a resolution that they want no parking signs put up along the road, the county will go along with it.
Okay, so, thank you.
I, just to dovetail on that, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If the board were to act in the affirmative and were to make that recommendation, no parking on 524, I also think there should be no parking on West Farms Road. There's like no shoulder whatsoever. Even getting around a mail truck is like dangerous. So, if you had like a large string of cars on West Farms at any point, that could be problematic as well.
Yeah, and just to clarify, so the board doesn't have jurisdiction to make an applicant put public signage on a public right of way? You can make it a condition and a recommendation to the county and to the governing body to restrict, you know, but it would ultimately have to be the county and the governing body based off of the request from the, from the board, so.
Anybody else?
Are we in like, what, we're in comments now? I thought we were still in questions? Oh, okay, I'll go.
Oh, this is, are we doing questions or comments?
Both, both.
Yeah, both. Okay, both, thank you. My name is Marty McHugh. I am not a resident of the community, but I have been, I've been aware of this project. I've been working in environmental protection for close to 40 years now, which I can't believe.
Mr. McHugh, can I...
Yes. Oh, yes, swear me in, I'm sorry.
Do you swear the testimony of the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And even though you're not from Howell, please state your address.
So, my address is 4 Lebanon Drive in Brielle, New Jersey. So, I've spent 25 years at the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. I have spent another 20, what am I saying, another 10 to 15 years doing environmental consulting, working for the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, the Conservation Fund. I worked for a construction company that's not too far down the road from here, the Dawson Corporation, doing stream restorations, wetlands restorations, and I, and I'm also a lawyer, but I don't practice law anymore. So, I appreciate the...
Chairman, I just want to put on the record, there's a concept of standing. When you come to a zoning board, you're supposed to have standing for an application. I don't know if someone in Brielle necessarily has standing for this. Also, to start with a preamble, you know, your expertise, you work for the DEP, this person cannot give scientific or expert testimony, it's not...
I'm not, I'm not...
Excuse me, sir. So, I, I just want to put my objection on it, that all of those credentials, et cetera, should be disregarded, you can't testify as an expert witness, and...
Okay, well, I'm going to...
I, I just want to be noted on that.
Yeah, no, can you chime in on that? I just wanted to get your...
Yeah, well, he's not here on behalf of a party or...
I'm not representing anybody.
Yeah. He can testify, a non-resident can testify.
Okay. Yeah, please continue.
I'm, I'm representing the trees, right? Let's put it that way. I forget what, what story I used to read, my, the Lorax, thank you, I used to read to my kids. So, anyway, I have a lot of experience with wildlife management. I was Director of Fish and Wildlife. I am not going to testify as a scientist, sir, right, or as an expert, but as an interested party, as an interested resident of the state of New Jersey, and she, and also as a consultant that sees what's going on in the state with the increased rain events that we've been having, right? There's a Category 1 stream, as Mr. Myers has talked about, Marsh Bog Brook, 500-foot buffer. We have habitat for species of special concern, pilaid woodpecker, there's a lot of other species there. There's going to be a lot of trees taken down. When those trees get taken down, it's going to change the hydrology of the system, we're going to have water issues, all right? I see it all over the state. I would say 70% of my work right now is dealing with too much water, right? Too much water in, in not only developed areas, but undeveloped areas. That's how, that's, that's the kind of changes that are happening in our, in our weather patterns. Whether it's climate change, or whatever you want to call it, it's happening, right? We've got sea level rise, we've got all that, right? So, you have an area here that's already flooding, right? People's basements are flooding, from what I understand, I, I know from, from experience, seeing the flooding at the apartments that are, you know, down the road. So, this is a watershed that's already experiencing significant stress, all right? And it's not going to get any better. And then when you go in to put in any, any type of development in this zone right here, you're going to cause more problems into the future. So, and, and those problems are going to be hard to rectify, and they're expensive to rectify, especially when you have homes, businesses around them. I know, because I'm, that's what I'm doing, right? That's the kind of work that I do right now. And, and I'm doing a lot of it in Monmouth County as well. So, I would, I would proceed very carefully here with any development. And then, one of the things that I'm also involved with is contamination and remediation. And the comments here from the public have been very accurate. Once, once an area gets contaminated, especially in an area like this, with the slopes that you have and the wetlands, riparian corridor that you have, it's an important, you know, water source, it's a tributary to a water source, Masquon Reservoir, Masquon River, it's going to be very hard to get contaminants out of there, and very expensive.
Mr. McHugh, I don't mean to interrupt anymore, but I don't see how your testimony could be construed as something besides trying to give an expert opinion on, because you're taking into account other people's testimony and offering your view of it. So, I, I, I think it's not overly helpful for you to continue, because all you're going to do is contaminate the application one way or another.
I hear what you're saying, sir, but let me just conclude by saying that, take this really seriously, any development in that, in that zone, right? Because there are so many problems associated with too much water, and it's going to be really hard to rectify it there if it comes to that.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a couple of questions for this witness.
All right, go ahead.
It'll be brief. Mr. McHugh?
Yep.
It's, what is it? 8:30 on Wednesday night, 30 degrees out, we're in Howell, right?
Right.
And you live in Brielle?
Right.
And this is what, 10, 11 acres, this site?
Yep.
And it's going to be green when it's done, right? It's going to have grass over it, and plants and trees?
Yeah, but, well...
It's not like other developments, right?
I don't know what kind of trees it's going to, I, I don't know.
This is the first time you've come to the Howell Board of Adjustment, the Howell Planning Board, or any board in Howell, despite the thousands of acres?
I don't think this is your first time here.
No, I was here last time, I listened to the testimony last time.
Have you been here from another application?
No, I've never been here before.
Yeah, so my point is, you're here, what's so special about this? What motivated you to come out tonight on this application to make an environmental...
I spent my whole life in this state managing natural resources, trying to protect natural resources, trying to mitigate impacts to natural resources. I became aware of this, it's right down the road from where I work, I go past it all the time. I know how important it is to the watershed, I'm working in the watershed, and when I heard about it, I thought, you know what? It's time for somebody to kind of speak up on this, and try to help the, you know, the locals who have, have an issue here.
Thank you.
And that's the only reason why I'm here.
Okay.
Important enough.
Can you show it to the attorneys first? So, in case there's any issues with it?
I don't know what to make of it, but I don't know what your testimony is going to be.
It's about the construction of kosher caskets.
Based on an article? You're an expert on kosher caskets?
No, there's two articles there, because they're...
I don't consent to this, but, you know, let him make the foundation, why this should go into...
Yeah, I want you to chime in and let us know if you think it's acceptable.
Why don't you describe, why doesn't Mr. Bernstein, right, describe what you're submitted, trying to submit to the board and how it relates?
Thank you, thank you for giving, thank you for giving me the time. So, as I said before, my name, I'm actually an Orthodox Jew, okay? That's where I come from. Now, in that realm, there's something called a mitzvah. And a mitzvah is when you do something for somebody else, when there's absolutely no reason for you to do it, okay? You're just going to do something good. Well, for me, when I lived in Brooklyn, it was to make kosher caskets. That's what I would do. For people that could not afford them, rabbi would certify them, and someone would get buried in them. I would get a phone call that they need this one to buy this wide by this long, and I, when I would make them. Kosher caskets are much different than Evergreen Cemetery that this is being compared to. Evergreen Cemetery goes into vaults. Those vaults have a tar layer on the outside and on the inside. That's to stop water from penetrating from what's in it to out of it, okay? Water may get in it, but it won't, it won't go in both directions, it's only going to go in one. Kosher caskets are not designed for that. They're made out of a wood, that's it. There are no metal fasteners in it, there are no nails, there are no screws. The glue is kosher, meaning it has no formaldehyde in it, doesn't have any animal byproducts in it. And when you put it together, it's all designed to decompose at the rate of the body. But there's one part that they don't really talk about, because nobody wants to talk about it. The bottom of that casket is full of holes, okay? You drill 100 holes in the bottom of it, if it's a solid piece of wood, or you cut grooves in it. I've seen some of them made, where they're made with just slats of wood, and there's an opening in between the slats. The reason for this is to allow the groundwater to come up into the casket. The body in the box rots, it collapses, you add some more dirt, and you plant bushes. That's the way it works, okay? That's been that way for hundreds of years, okay? What's changed immensely is what goes into these, these caskets now. I think if you, if I turned around and I looked, if I asked everybody in here to raise their hand if they're on some kind of daily medication, I'd take three, okay? When they bury me, don't drink the water that I leak into, okay? I can tell you that right now, okay? But people take daily medicine. Now, if you have somebody that was brought up before that is going through cancer of any kind, and they're getting some kind of chemotherapy, radiation, cyber knife, whatever you could think of, and God forbid they don't make it, they pass away, well, they're going to go on that ground, they're going to go real quick. Radiation has a half-life, okay? It doesn't go away quickly. It doesn't go away quickly. But they're gonna decompose, the box is gonna decompose, and it's gonna get rained on, and it's gonna end up in these people's wells. You can't allow it, 'cause you can't undo it, like they said. You can't. Once it's there, it's there forever, okay? We talk about rain versus these caskets? They're designed to get rained on. That's the whole thing. And now, we have 100-year storms now, every couple of months. We get a ridiculous amount of rain. So, I would ask you, from my heart, please do not consider Evergreen Cemetery in this application. You cannot compare the two. They are one end of each spectrum to the other, okay? You're putting one into a concrete vault, and one you're just putting in to the ground designed to rot in a specific amount of time. You add 5,300 bodies? Forget it. It's over. That ground is gonna be, it's over. So, thank you all very much for your time.
So, Mr. Bern, Mr. Bernstein, if I could, if I could just ask-
Go ahead.
So, you, your testimony before the board's based on your personal experience, right?
Yes, I've unfortunately had to make a bunch of-
So, you didn't write these articles?
No, I did not write these, but I did.
Okay, so we're gonna give them back to you? Because you testified based on your knowledge-
Which is exactly what Mr. Schwartz testified to, so I don't have any issue with it.
Yep, so I don't, I don't, I don't think we're, I don't think it's a-
That's fine.
Okay, so I'm just gonna-
I didn't know if you needed it or not.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, everybody.
'Cause it creates all kinds of other legal issues, you know?
Yeah, I get it.
Okay, anybody else?
Hey, again, I'm Jeffrey Buck, 74 Vander Beer Road. I've been sworn in at the first meeting we had, so, uh, I'm extremely nervous, so-
Relax.
First thing I have is pictures of Farmingdale Garden Apartments in 2019, the flooding that happens at the tracks. Flooding comes from the Marsh Bog Brook, and goes all, obviously, I have, there's several photos in here, um, that-
Are they the same, or are they all different?
Um, there's groups of different photos, so, they're all the same.
And did you take these pictures?
No, they're on the internet.
Okay.
What, they're on the internet?
Just, um-
I don't know if this is relevant-
I just want to know if he's familiar with this?
Yes.
Date and time, and if he saw it himself? He didn't have to take the picture, but if this-
Well, the thing is, it should be relevant if they're within, you know, 200 feet of the proposed cemetery. So, if there are pictures where we can see water issues, I think it's, uh, I think-
Yeah, I just want to know if he can say, he didn't take these pictures, he says they're on the internet. I just want to know if he says he was there when this happened, and that's what it looked like. And if he can say that, that's fine with me.
Okay.
It was actually worse when I was there to see it.
So, you, okay, I don't have any issue with it.
And that, that level of water goes the other direction across the tracks, too, from the Marsh Bog Brook. This is on the side of Marsh Bog Brook that's away from the proposed cemetery. So, the, the water goes both ways when the, when the, uh, Brook overflows. Um, I don't know if this is, uh, something that-
Can you just hold on one second? So, we're gonna mark these as P4, and then we're gonna distribute them while you're talking, so this way it's-
I don't sound happy to put this up and see where this was. Is this where those apartments were, right about, I'm not, right, right in there? Okay, I got it.
Just, you could just initial there, I did.
I see, thank you.
I'm sorry, did you have a date on them?
2019.
2019, okay. Thank you.
And I, I actually do want to make an objection to this, because we don't know what the drainage conditions are there, we don't know what the design is, we don't know if it's maintained. It looks like localized puddling right around these buildings. Um, now, I, I don't know if this spilled over the banks, or where this came from, what the rain event was, all those things. It's not an engineer.
Yeah, I don't-
What, what bearing does this have on what's on the other side of the road?
Well, the Marsh Bog Brook is actually lower than that on the other side of the road.
That's my objection, Mr.-
Well, well-
Yeah, I don't know if they're in or not, I mean-
I mean, I, I would recommend, look, the, the, the witness can, the, the individual can testify as to this, what he, why he thinks it's relevant, what it depicts, and the board can-
Yeah, we can, yeah.
He's not an expert, he's, it's, it's, it's subject to-
Okay, I, I agree, Andy.
Yeah. Go ahead, sir.
Generally a very low-lying area, this whole thing here. Um, I also have, um, from the internet, it tells you how, uh, that antibiotic-resistant bacteria is becoming a issue.
This is another scientific testimony on an article from the internet. That, that should not be admitted.
No.
That's not, not admissible?
No.
All right.
Sorry.
Um, this is something I wrote, because I know this land, like, excuse me. This was the one property here-
Can I help you? Can I help you get through this?
Yeah.
So, he created an exhibit based upon his personal knowledge of how the water, this is the map you showed me?
Uh, yes.
So, how the, the direction that the water flows in this area, based on his knowledge.
Okay.
And he doesn't have enough for everybody, so I advise to give one to Mr. Jackson, one to the objector's attorney, and then you guys could share, um, just showing his experience in the area. That's what that is.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, just, just for the record, note my objection, I suspect you're going to let it in, but without being an engineer, without an expert, a layperson doing a, a diagram of hydrology, I think, uh, engineers spend a lot of time in school studying this to get the right qualifications. And I don't know how helpful, it, it has no scientific basis, no, uh, credential basis. You know, you can observe a water flowing at high tide or low tide, we don't know what that means. And I think it's, um, you know, some, not something the board should consider. That's my objection, thank you.
I, I made this because I've witnessed the water flowing in this direction, 'cause I know the property so, so well.
Yeah.
Well, why, when you say that, what is the factual basis for saying you know the pro- why do you, or how do you know the property so well? As opposed to just say a conclusion?
I, I'm so nervous, I wrote this down.
No, okay, well, yeah, okay.
So, if you want me to read it, I can read it right now.
Just relax, honestly, it's nothing to be nervous about.
Well-
These are your neighbors, the boards-
I have a tough enough time on a one-on-one kind of conversation, so this is not my, uh, you know, my area of expertise to talk to several people. Um, anyway, I'll, uh, I'll read what I got here. Um, okay, uh, just four pages, it won't take too long. Hello, I'm going to go through a short history of my experience with the property of the proposed graveyard and the surrounding properties. It may seem like I am giving more information than you need to know, but please bear with me, as all I'm about to say will come together in the end. I had been very good friends, this is what's breaking me up, with James Lura, up until he passed away a little over two years ago. Sorry. He lived at 10 Boy's Lane. We had been friends since the mid-'90s, about 30 years. His grandmother lived at 20 Boy's Lane, until she passed away around the year 2000. After that, his brother moved into his grandmother's house, along with two friends. We all spent most of our weekends together, along with others, at these two properties. We were all outdoor people, spending most of our time enjoying the outdoors. Our favorite pastime, we all enjoyed, was riding dirt bikes. I live over on Vander Beer Road, coming, coming from the woods behind my house, there are railroad tracks that go right past the property of the proposed graveyard. I could ride my dirt bike from my house, along the railroad tracks, across Fairfield Road, across Yellow Brook Road, up to the proposed property of the graveyard, where there was a trail to go up to, up the hill of the proposed property to 10 Boy's Lane. Once there, we would gather with friends and head out to the tracks, or head out to the track. We had a track at the rear of the property, at, between 10 Boy's Lane and 20 Boy's Lane, and it covered about an acre. That's where we would drive. Near the track, about 100 feet away or so, there is a low point, pretty much in the center of the property, behind, uh, 10 Boy's Lane. This area is always marshy. During an average summer storm, this area would gather some water. This water comes from higher elevations and runs along the surface to this point. The water that ends up here comes from the entire existing graveyard. This is the map that I brought, that I showed where the water comes from. The water ends up here, comes from the entire existing graveyard, the horse farm on West Farms Road, the property of 61 Adelphia Road, 59 Adelphia Road, all of 10 Boy's Lane, and all of 20 Boy's Lane, all drained to this area. About once every five to 10 years, when we would get a nor'easter storm, or extremely heavy rainfall, all this wa, water would saturate the ground and end up at this low point. Only when this happened, it was no longer just covering the low point, it would cover an area that would be well over an acre, including the entire dirt bike track. I have pictures showing this, 'cause it's, it's unbelievable. At the center, it would be about four to five feet deep. It was such a large area that James's brother and his friends bought a used canoe to paddle around in. During this time, the groundwater would be so saturated, depending on the rainfall following the storm, water would be there from several weeks to several months. During this time, that the water is present, the sump pumps at 10 and 20 Boy's Lane would run every day. The real issue when this water is present, is that the property of the proposed graveyard would be so saturated, that I could not travel through it on my dirt bike. About midway down the hill, all the water, all the, all the way to the bottom of the hill, along the railroad tracks, the water perks out of the ground, creating a swampy mess. My dirt bike would not sink, would just sink into the ground. I could not ride through it. It, it's obvious to me that all the water saturating the ground at this higher elevation comes to the surface, or at, oh, at a lower elevation, and will effectively flush the contents of the ground, bringing to the surface where it will run down into the Marsh Bog Brook. To further worsen the condition, the plan is to remove all the trees and vegetation from this property, currently burn off a good portion of the groundwater. I did some research about graveyards and the high-water table, and what I found is that E. coli can become a big problem. E. coli thrives in a decomposition of a dead body, especially in a wet environment. Not only that, E. coli becomes antibiotic-resistant when it feeds on a decaying composition of the human body. Knowing that this could be a possible, or more likely a probability, that this antibiotic-resistant E. coli will easily take the short path of the water seeping out of the side of the embankment at this site, and down to the Marsh Bog Brook, a C1 stream at the bottom of this property. I strongly suggest to take some various, very serious consideration in improving this application. And I have pictures of the, the track that is behind the, um, 10 and 20 Boy's Lane. This is a, I don't know if anybody can say, I have, I have pictures for anybody.
Okay, um, I don't want to cut you short, but I think you're giving us your personal views on seeing flooding there. But you're not gonna, you're not giving us testimony as far as what's causing it.
Right.
Because you're not an expert, so that's really all we can do, is just look at the pictures and see that there's a water issue there.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah, I, I really want somebody, what the problem is, is really, nobody can see what's going on unless we get a nor'easter and it floods like this, to really see where the water's going. If you do it when it's dry out, like right now-
Okay, well, have you been to any of our previous meetings?
Yes, I've been to all of them.
Okay, 'cause we, Charlie, our engineer, has gone over this site thoroughly, as far as that site. So, I understand there's water that goes into this area, but we're concerned with the proposed site right now.
Yeah, I think, well, that proposed site is such a drastic slope, that the water up where I'm talking about, is just basically saturated the whole mountain there, and it's just coming out at the bottom, lower elevations.
Okay.
And that's what I see.
'Cause I think everybody in this board has taken plenty of the testimony, and we have, you know, we have seen, you know, enough testimony and heard enough that I think we can go from what we've, based on the application.
Right.
But I do appreciate the pictures, 'cause it does-
Do you, do you want, and, these pictures, or?
Which pictures are these, sir, now?
These are pictures of the flooding at that location that I'm talking about, at the higher elevation.
Where exactly the higher elevation, 'cause, uh-
See, Mr. Chairman, then-
You see Boy's Lane there? Where it ends? Then there's a house right at, right to the left of that, right behind that house is where I'm talking about.
Yeah, but that's not-
It's a much higher elevation.
Yeah, it's a higher elevation, I know.
Yeah. I'm just saying that, that ground gets saturated there. When that ground gets saturated, it's saturated all over the place. Farmingdale is extremely low-lying-
Well, we had testimony from some of the residents have already stated that, so, we are aware of it.
Okay. I just don't know if you know what happens when we get a nor'easter, or you get that volume of water in that area, 'cause it does oversaturate that, that area.
Okay.
That doesn't happen all the time.
Okay, well, thank you so much. I just want to get anybody else who wants to come up.
Do you know if these are, anybody want to see these, or are they elevated at all?
Does anybody on the board need to say anymore?
No.
We're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm not going to cross-examine that witness. I made my objection, um, I have a lot of questions for him about engineering, his knowledge, his knowledge of hydrology, his knowledge of, you know, decomposition, et cetera. But I'm, I'm not going to, not because I don't want to, but because it's nine o'clock, and I think you get the idea.
Yeah.
So, I don't want you to think I, I consent to that, or act, we have-
No, no, I understand Mr. Jackson perfectly.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I, yeah.
Okay, I have to introduce myself again, or Michael Getman?
Yeah.
Well, I'm still sworn in, right? Can you pan out a little bit on that photo? That's good. All right. Now, if you look at that, you see Marsh Bog Brook at the top, and if you pan out a little bit more, you'll see Marsh Bog Brook pretty much straight below it, right? Uh, go up, or just, yeah, all right. You see, uh, you see where Evergreen Cemetery is?
Yes.
Okay. To the right of that, Marsh Bog Brook pretty much goes straight down. It meanders a little bit, but it's been, this site is being compared to Evergreen Cemetery. Evergreen Cemetery goes really nowhere near, it's on higher ground from the proposed cemetery. The proposed cemetery is on wetland. The proposed cemetery is immediately adjacent to Marsh Bog Brook. The cemetery, I think you pointed out, it's, it's 100 years old, right?
That's what they said in the letter, yeah.
I would think that the majority of people that are interned there have long since decomposed. Yeah. So, that, if that was ever a threat, I think that's long since gone away, okay? This is also, what is it, 5,400 proposed?
Yes.
Okay. Now, a quick Google of Evergreen, it's 3,100. There's over 2,000 more going in this small space, immediately adjacent to a category one waterway, and a wetland, all right? You have a town nearby where the majority of people, and, and the rural areas that surround it, my house being one of them, and all my neighbors, we have wells, okay? There's a lot of concern there, okay? Ms. Aunt Nellie made, he, she pointed out, why don't the town, why doesn't a town buy it?
I don't mean to interrupt, but that's not really an issue for the, for the zoning board.
Okay, I understand.
That's, that's for the mayor and council.
Okay.
So, then that's not relevant to the, whether this application's a good or bad application.
All right.
Um, my point, I was leading to that, is I have two neighbors' homes, two doors down, four doors down from me. The park system bought those homes. They were move-in ready, but their aim is to have open space and parkland. They knocked down those homes in the last six months, and they cleared those lots, so they can return them to woods. We got woods. Why take them down? I'm not opposed to a Jewish cemetery, right? I'm not opposed to their religious beliefs, and how they intern people. I mean, by all means, this is just not the right place for it. It's a very poor choice. Give them another place- Give them another place to, I mean, we've been building warehouses right and left, and I don't see them built on, you know, wetlands. You're going to say we're running out of space? It just doesn't make sense. I don't know how much more I can add to that.
No. Duly noted.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add a clarifying point.
Yes.
So, I just want to put on for the record, so the township is not in the business of allowing people to build development within wetlands or regulated areas, right? Any applicant before a land use board that has regulated features that are regulated by DEP needs to get the appropriate outside agency approvals from DEP. So, you know, if this board were to act favorably on the application, you know, I think you've heard Mr. Jackson put some representation earlier on in the night about where they thought the wetlands are, might be a little bit more based off of them going to DEP and things like that, you know, they'd have to get their approvals from DEP, as well as their approvals from the township, to be able to do whatever they want.
Yes.
So, you know, the representation that the township's letting them build on wetlands, I just, that's not something the township does, and I just want to clarify that for the board and for the public.
Okay. Duly noted.
May I request something for the next case? I happen to have that case too. I see it's after nine.
Yes.
Three or four people who are here waiting, and I don't know if we're going to reach the next case, if we could adjourn that now and pick a new date, or if you're going to try to get.
Yeah.
I don't know how many.
How many more people would like to comment, just so I get an idea?
So, maybe we could get started. And then, on behalf of my group.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, I mean, here's the thing, we may be done before ten, but ten's going to be the cutoff, so I don't know if it's worth getting started on, so, I mean, that's going to be your call.
Yeah, but I don't think she could do that. She might be.
We would ask that that case get a new date. That is, I'm sorry, the vehicle stuff. Six forty-five Oakland Road?
Yes.
I'm the attorney for that as well. I don't know what the date would be. Because obviously, we're never going to finish that case.
No, you're not going to finish it tonight, so I don't know if you want to start out fresh.
You do get a leg up, John, if you start, honestly, right? I mean, we're trying to move things along, but it's up to everybody.
I mean, do you want to at least get, maybe have one of your first witnesses at least get something on tonight? Because, I mean, Elaine, I believe we're pretty well.
Well, here's my schedule. February twenty-fourth has three applications, March tenth has four applications, March twenty-fourth has a huge application, and April seventh has two applications. So, I don't know what date you want. April twenty-eighth, right now, has nothing.
And I think what Andy was trying to say is, if you start, then you kind of like leapfrog over.
I'll go by the recommendation of Ms. Beam.
Yes, yeah, that's.
What am I?
Nothing.
Yeah.
You're just a rolling attorney, Andy.
Why did you figure that out?
Jen's taking my credit for my idea.
I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, 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 but I, do you want to confer with them? I'm just saying, it would not be a bad idea to at least get something started, so you do.
Okay, great.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for your time. My name is Angela Goldberg. I live at thirty-three Johnny Drive in Howell, Farmingdale. So.
Have you been sworn in, ma'am?
I have not.
Do you swear, the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes. I felt compelled to come this evening, because I have some major concerns. I know a lot of the residents have already addressed a lot of the issues that I was also concerned about. One of the issues I have is I, it's the traffic, obviously. I have to come up Asbury Road to the blinking light and make a left a lot of occasions through the town of Farmingdale. Sometimes you take your life in your hands, because it's dangerous to make a left onto Main Street. Also, if you're coming off of Southard, that's another nightmare a lot of times. I have a mom who lives in Ramtown, so I frequently travel up Lakewood-Farmingdale Road, and I don't know if this was addressed in the traffic study or not, but there are already major issues at the intersection of Lakewood-Farmingdale Road and Herbertsville Road. I know the majority of the people that would be visiting the cemetery are coming from Lakewood, and that's the route they travel, Lakewood-Farmingdale Road. So, I feel that the traffic impact would be significantly worse. I, my last name is Goldberg, I'm married to a Jewish person, and I have been to many Jewish services and cemeteries, and I have never had twelve cars. There's usually quite a bit more vehicular traffic attending funerals and cemeteries. So, that's that. I also am concerned with initially hundreds, and then eventually thousands of bodies in various stages of decomposition going into the ground, for various reasons. I'm a breast cancer survivor, and I had, went through chemo treatments, and I know a lot of people who passed away during that, and being buried with, again, a lot of chemicals in your body, medications in your body, I can't see that this would not impact the Manasquan River and the groundwater with people with wells. I don't have a well, but I'm concerned for them, for sure. So, those are my major concerns. I also am concerned about the habitat that this is going to be taking up, and all of the trees that are going to be cut down, the wildlife that will be impacted, the woodpeckers, obviously, but in addition to that, we have a lot of wildlife in this area that need wooded areas. I mean, we're basically cutting down everything that we, any kind of space for wildlife habitat, and I happen to be an animal lover, so it pains me to think that hundreds of trees and, you know, places where wildlife habitat occupy currently is going to be destroyed for the cemetery. So, those are just the comments that I wanted to make. And again, I don't know if the traffic study addressed the issue of Herbertsville Road and Lakewood-Farmingdale Road, because, again, I think the majority of the traffic would be coming from Lakewood and come through that area, and it's already a severe issue. If you've been in that area at different times of the day, the traffic backs up, trying to make a left onto Herbertsville, all the way over the one ninety-five corridor. So, that would definitely be another issue that I'm concerned with, because, again, I frequently travel to Ramtown to visit my elderly mom. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you again for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mark Preasey. I was sworn in earlier. Mr. Jackson, just a quick question regarding Exhibit A-10, which is the resolution of approval from the governing body to advance this application to the zoning board. You familiar with that document?
It's not appropriate to cross-examine attorneys. We're not under oath, we're advocates, and I just, it's unusual.
Why don't you make your statement, Mr. Preasey?
Yeah, I would make a statement, and I agree.
Well, I mean, my question was, when this application was submitted to the township, it's my understanding that they would have gone through some review process with Township Administration, probably not this board. I don't know what type of technical review was involved with that, and how much information our governing body was provided. So, they made an informed decision as to whether or not to, they had no objections to this.
So, I can probably.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I was going to let you.
So, as I've told you already, what was put forth to the governing body was not an application of this level of detail, it was basically asking them permission to make the application. That was it. So, I know you've asked me this multiple times, I've told you the same answer multiple times, this, what went before the governing body was, can we, in Howell Township, make an application? That's what that was. So, they did not get into detailed negotiated protracted meetings. That's not how this went down. So, I.
So, do you know, Jen, can I ask you, do you know if the governing body knew the scope of the cemetery?
I don't know what they knew and did it, what they knew in terms of that, but I can tell you that they weren't provided detailed plans. It wasn't an, it wasn't a site plan application, it was, are we allowed to make this application? And the answer was, yes, make the application. They, in no way, shape, or form, endorsed it, approved it, they basically gave them permission to make the application. That's the entirety of this resolution. That's it. And quite honestly, why would they say no? Somebody wants to make an application to a board, this is the correct body to get into the level of detail and evaluate the testimony, and that's why we're here.
But isn't it true, Jen? And I don't want to get into a back and forth, but my understanding is that in the state of New Jersey, the laws say that we don't have any permitted use zoning for cemeteries. The state law says that the person who wants to develop a cemetery first needs to go and get consent from the governing body to advance an application to the zoning board.
Which is exactly what I just said twice.
So, my question is, does, did the council know that this was a cemetery for five hundred plots, five thousand, fifty thousand? Like, what information did our council have available to them?
So, I would suggest, perhaps, on a Tuesday night, you direct that conversation to them, because it's totally inappropriate here. They have nothing to do with that. They don't even have any governing body members on, on the board here. So, if you have questions about what the council did, go ask them.
Well, that's why I addressed my question to Mr. Jackson, because he's applicant, I would presume that he maybe had information.
This is not appropriate for this body. This is not, this application.
I think Jen's, what Jen's saying is, all that resolution did was get them here.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, Mark, I mean, we're all aware, we're all aware.
Right.
So, how I got here is not our concern. We're getting the information, and we are going to make the decision.
Right. Well, to that point, I do have just concerns about the integrity of the process, and I'm not questioning anybody potentially having a conflict, but it concerns me that I happen to know that a sitting councilwoman voted to advance this application.
Completely inappropriate.
Yeah.
Mark.
Yeah.
Okay, listen, you guys all know what I'm saying.
No. What you're insinuating is that something nefarious happened, and it did not.
That's what I'm saying, is that I don't think.
Mr. Chairman, I object to this line of question, and I, you know.
Yeah, I'll make my comment.
Excuse me, the document speaks for itself, and in my summation, I have a different take than Ms. Beam, respectfully, and I'll make my comments during summation on exactly what the document says, and its bearing on this application, which I'm going to argue does have a legal bearing, and, you know, the board can make its determination. But to get into innuendo, you know what I'm talking about, et cetera, that's an insult to the sport.
So, then I will make my comment, and I'll leave it at that. It concerns me when we have people that are serving on council, advancing an application to come to the zoning board, and a spouse or relative of that individual is also participating in the application, and I will leave it at that. Concerns me.
Now, how do you untut that horn? You know, you told them not to say, you told them not to get into it, so I ask that the board disregard that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's disregarded.
We have to.
Do we have the resolution?
Yes.
I think the resolution predates a certain number's membership.
Exactly.
It's A-10 is the resolution. I have it right on my screen, if you want to see it.
No, I have it. I'm good. It's in the packet. It's good. Is there, is there anything else? Like, we're losing track here.
Anybody else for a public comment?
I make a motion to close.
No, I think you have.
On behalf of.
You have Mr. Banana.
I just wanted to provide their comments.
Okay, I'm.
You're up, I think you're up, Mr. Banana, right? There's nobody else, so.
No, but I'm saying we can close, and he can make the sum. Yeah. So, let's just close to public motion, like, why not?
Yeah, motion to close to public.
Second by Tom, on favor.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, I'm here on behalf of objectors, and I'll give you the names, Richard Buck, Joyce Barceniac, Krista Rigan, and Thomas Klein. We're all neighbors of the area affected by the application.
Mr. Chairman, half of those people testified. If they were represented by council, now they have two bites at the apple. They got up to say their piece, make their legal argument, now their council's doing the same thing. That is inappropriate. When you're represented by council, your legal arguments, your summation is made through your attorney. So, I just want to, Mr. Klein testified, Mr. Buck testified.
No, Mr., it's a different Mr. Buck. Richard, I represent Richard Buck. That was a different Buck.
That was brought to this attorney's attention, and he said nobody was testifying.
All right, then I stand corrected, and I apologize for interrupting.
So, I mean, period on behalf of these individuals, and, you know, Mr. Myers, who spoke, I think, you know, in a way, that crystallizes what I wanted to say, and that is, why take the risk? And I think when the last meeting, very long meeting we had, one of the members of the board, you know, made, mentioned the fact, when Frank Getchall, the hydrogeologist was speaking, do we want to really let the cat out of the bag? When you let the cat out of the bag, there's no putting the cat back in the bag. And that's really the thrust of our concern here, is there's a risk here. You've heard about the risks from Mr. Getchall, chemicals in the body, these are older, generally speaking, older people. So, I guess on behalf of myself, a lot of older, you're on different types of medications. So, you're dealing with a generally older population, you're going to have a lot of medications from fifty-four hundred bodies ultimately, some chemotherapy drugs with high, with half-lives, radioactive half-lives, all getting into the groundwater, potentially into drinking water, into the Marshbrook Creek, you know, this, there's a significant risk. Now, Mr. Getchall mentioned, you could put in monitoring wells, you could do that, but then you find out there's contamination, then that's it. Again, the cat's out of the bag, you have a problem, all these people then have contaminated water, and they may have been drinking contaminated water before you discovered that, you know, from the monitoring wells that it was contaminated. There's a significant health, significant environmental concern here, a real risk, and it has to be taken seriously. This is, they're asking for a use variance, which the bar is set very, very high here, and in light of the risks, the flooding risk potentially downstream, the impact to the Marshbrook Creek, to the groundwater, to the drinking water of the people in this area, and all the unknowns, where, when you find out what the knowns are, it's too late, this is too great a risk to take for the people in this area. So, you know, the bar is set very high for a use variance, and you're well aware of the standard, but I just want to reiterate, the standard, this is a D-one, it's a D-one variance, it's not a permitted use, this is the, this area is an ARE two, agriculture rural area, and one of the key things you need to consider is no substantial detriment. And I would submit to you, on behalf of the objectors I represent, there is a potential substantial detriment, and if this is approved, then that could be realized, and you're going to adversely affect many, many people, and you're going to adversely affect the environment in this area, people who use the Marshbrook Creek, kids who play in the Marshbrook Creek, the ecosystem there, wildlife in that area, this could have a significant adverse effect that can't be ignored. So, on behalf of the objectors, I implore you to consider these factors, and the benefit, yeah, and for Mr. Schwartz, Rabbi Schwartz, I mean, I understand, it seems like he's very passionate about this, and, you know, it's very admirable, commendable, what he wants to do, but this is not the place for it. There has to be another place, this is a horrible place for this type of thing. So, we urge you to deny this application. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, can we start with putting A-10 up on the board, on the screen? This is the resolution of the mayor and council, and I have a copy in front of me that I can read. And I, I have a copy in front of me that I can read. So, you can zoom it in. Whereas Third Avenue is desirous of developing a cemetery, the statute states that a cemetery shall not be established or enlarged without first obtaining the consent of the municipality by resolution. Whereas Third Avenue has submitted that request, whereas after consideration and finding no objection to the development of the property as a licensed cemetery, now therefore be resolved, the mayor and council state as follows. A licensed cemetery may be established by Third Avenue Associates on the property known as Block 219, Lot 13, in the township of Howell, subject to the township of Howell planning or zoning board approval. And then will return outside agency approvals. So, this is legally significant in the sense of a zoning analysis. This is unusual territory. Zoning regulations are something that you get a D-variance from. Zoning regulations are adopted by the mayor and council. The whole theory behind a D-variance is that you're doing something in an area where the mayor and council has determined by ordinance that that's not the right place for that zone. That's not the right zone for that use. It's not the right place for that use. So, what, what we have here is, it's kind of a different circumstance as it relates to the analysis of the use, use issue. This is not a place where the governing body has said a cemetery does not belong. The mayor and council said that they have no objection to it. They made the application. They're familiar with the neighborhood, they're familiar with the lot, block, presumably they know the town, they know the residents, and they've said the applicant may apply here to either the planning board or the board of adjustment. So, in that context, now certainly we do have to go through this process, and it's a review process, and I have all comments to make about that. But that has material bearing on the use variance. What has an even more profound bearing on the use variance is Mr. Myers said something. He said that, you know, because this is for a particular religious group, that it is not an inherently beneficial use because it doesn't serve the greater good. That could not be a more inaccurate statement of what the law is on inherently beneficial uses. Half of the, many of the inherently beneficial cases have to do with houses of worship that relate to a particular religious group. I could cite them. I have, I have, you know, right on my screen, House of Fire Christian Church versus zoning board, all, there are many inherently beneficial uses that say, you know, you can build a, a religious school, you can build a, you know, a church, a house of worship, a mosque, whatever. The inherently beneficial use goes not to serving that particular religion, it goes to serving religion. One of the most fundamental tenets of the, of our constitution, the bedrock that our country was built on, is freedom of religious practice. So, what the inherently beneficial use doctrine recognizes is that we're, we, the, the law respects and gives special, special priority, special recognition to uses that are associated with the practice of religion. You heard Rabbi Schwartz testify. There is a growing population of, to say orthodox Jews, to say Hasidic Jews, it's, I'll use the term observant Jews, Jews that are, you know, pretty observant, and there's many different stripes of that. There, there is a growing population in Howell, and in many of the areas surrounding Lakewood, which is kind of like an epicenter, which is right around the corner from this site. It's, it's, it's a growing Jewish population, and the needs of that community are for respectful, decent burials in accordance with the laws and their customs that have been going on for 5,000 years. This is nothing light. This is a, something of profound importance. And the governing body recognized that when they said, you may do this here. We think this, the governing body has no objection. They respected that bedrock principle that, you know, you, you can have, if burial is not the epitome, the zenith of, of, of your religious beliefs, what is? When, when you go to a, a Christian mass, a Catholic mass, or you go to any Protestant service, the burial, you know, begins with baptism in many religions, and then it ends with, with the burial. That is the ultimate religious rite of passage, a literal passage into the, you know, to meet your maker. So, to say this is not an inherently beneficial use is outrageous, and I, I know what the court will do with that, to say that a cemetery is not inherently beneficial use. So, we have a double prong here that this board must take into account. Not only has the council said it is appropriate for this site, which turns on its head the idea that this is the wrong place for it per the, you know, the governing body's resolution through, through an ordinance, this is a resolution, almost the equivalent of an ordinance, but we also have an inherently beneficial use. And what that status does is that flips around the analysis that the board of adjustment must make. The board of adjustment is now in a situation where the inherent benefit of this use is established. It's established. And the only question is really whether there is a substantial detriment to the public good based on credible scientific or expert testimony. Your engineer has advised this board that, you know, that all this information about the water table, about building in the bed of the stream, et cetera, can you, can you go back to the, the first page of the PowerPoint, this one? All of that, you could, that, that one's good. You can go back to that one. Thank you. Thank you. Exhibit two. All of that information with the water, with the water table must be rejected because the board's own expert has said that we have to get DEP approvals, we must get soil borings, there must be changing in grades, there are engineering practices. Mr. Siv testified to that. He's a licensed civil engineer. There's been no licensed civil engineer to give testimony here to say that the hydrology does not work, to say that the drainage does not work, to say that, that, that things don't work here. It works. That's the only testimony that this board has in front of it. It works. So, if the board's going to deny this, it was simply baited by lay witnesses who don't have a scientific basis or a scientific understanding of what's going on, who have other motives for not wanting a cemetery here. The objector's own expert testified that the migration of the water here generally is away from the surrounding neighborhoods, and he said that it goes toward the wetlands. Our Dr. Stankin gave testimony about the decomposition of the body and what is involved in that. You know, the, the biomass on the planet is incredible, between the bugs, the birds, everything, over thousands of years. There's so much life. Look at, look at a, a, a light in the, in the, in the summer. How much life and, and bio, and biology is just swirling around a streetlight? There, there's a lot of things that die and that decompose and that go into earth. I mean, the, the, every, everything, you know, the, the, the verse from, I think it's from the Bible, ashes to ashes, dust to dust. That's what all of our fates are. Everything turns to ashes and everything turns to dust. What Rabbi Schwartz wants to do here is as old as time, and it's as fundamental as anything that, of the, of the fundamental human existence. All of us are going to die, and all of us are going to be in a casket. To say that a, a, a concrete crypt in the ground doesn't decompose over time, I mean, you know, that, that cemetery is from the 1800s. What were they doing in 1800, in 1890? You look, and I have the pictures, and, and you'll recall them, I, I don't want to ask them to be put up because it'll be a little, a little bit of a disruption, but, but the board can take notice. You drive around every downtown, every community, for centuries in this country have had cemeteries right in the church grounds with residential properties adjoining them. That is ubiquitous. Everywhere there, you look, there's a cemetery that's right next to homes, right next to residential area. Our Department of Environmental Protection in the state of New Jersey is a extremely vigilant governmental agency that looks after the environment very closely. There is nothing in New Jersey's regulations, despite one of the most robust environmental protection agencies in the country, that says that there is any environmental negative impact from the decomposition of bodies. You know, you get buried, and, you know, time, water, it all takes its toll, and as Dr. Stankin testified, the field of dissipation, the amount of, I forget what he said, it was something like a couple gallons or a gallons over a long period of time, come out of the body and go out. Is that a lot different than when a deer gets hit by a car and goes off into a road, the woods, and decomposes in the middle of the woods? Or, or when a fish dies in a stream? There is just such an enormous biomass of life and body and flesh that decomposes around us constantly. So, to say that this is somehow an environmental contamination just isn't borne out by the credible, reliable testimony. You know, I, I, I know it's hard as board members, you know, I know it's hard to just disregard the face of the, you know, members of the community. The water does not migrate upstream. The, the objector's own witness said that. Everything from here is downstream. There was questions about, you know, can there be contamination? And the objector's witness said, well, you know, there may be, there might be, there could be, there will be. That is not credible scientific testimony that there will be within a reasonable degree of scientific certainty. That's just speculation. It might. Well, the, the most interesting thing was when he was asked about, what were they called? The, the letters? I forget, MCVs or something like that, whatever those letters were. Oh, you know, you're only allowed to have so many parts per billion, but they're everywhere. They're in the food we drink, you know, you test the groundwater. What, what kind of a, you know, a, a percentage impact is a, is a decomposing body going to have on anyone? So, what, what we have here is an application to, to put in a cemetery for a segment of the population that needs to have its religious needs met. The idea that there is a, going to be traffic is just nonsense. I ask the board to take notice. How many times ever have you driven by any cemetery where there's a crowd that you can't get in and out, or that it's a, you know, some kind of an imposition? And if it is, you know what you do? You, you tilt your head and, and you, and you respect the people who are burying the dead. How many times do you have a funeral procession pass you at a red light and the police shut down everything? You know, there was, oh, what's going to happen if some prominent rabbi dies, like we see on, on TV? I, I remember when I was in law school in Springfield, Massachusetts, there was a police officer shot. There were, police came from all over the country. You could not move on the street. The whole city was shut down for the weekend to honor this police officer who was shot in the line of duty. That may happen here. We all live in an area, you know, we have Brooklyn nearby, we have Lakewood, two very, two areas where we have a lot of, a, a large Jewish population. How many times do you see on the news when a prominent religious leader passes away and you have a thousand people there? You know, the same thing's going to happen to sit here when you have a prominent person die, and it's very rare. And this is, how many in memory have you seen? The witness who was loaded for bear could point to one example. You know what? When that happens, you just respect that somebody lost a very beloved member of their community. Rabbi Schwartz has, I called it a labor of the heart. He's, he's thrown his heart and soul into this. He wants to do something for his community. I ask that this board do something for the greater community. Respect the fact that we have an important segment of our population that needs to have its religious needs met. The governing body of Howell has determined that they have no objection to this site. It's an inherently beneficial use. There are no substantial detriments. We ask that you approve this application. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Final summation?
Yes.
I have a question before you take this to the board.
Yes, I feel free. Go ahead.
So, Mr. O'Donnell, I apologize. Could I just jump in, because I was referenced in that summation, and I just want to put some points of clarity, because I think it's being misrepresented of what I put on the record and what I said. So, what I would say, regardless of any, regardless of any application, right, before the board, regardless whether it's a cemetery, whether it's a school, whether it's a warehouse, right, we review stormwater management for a site the same way, right? They need to comply with this town's stormwater control ordinance, they needed to comply with the DEP regulations. This site has regulated features by DEP. They also have to comply with DEP's regulations. There's another shot at the apple for them to review it. My testimony was in guards to, we would not sign off on this, on any application for the board if we didn't feel that the applicant adhered to the stormwater regulations at the municipal level and at the DEP level. I think there's a distinct difference in a lot of the concerns that you've heard. Obviously, there were some questions regarding stormwater management and, you know, whether those are existing conditions, things like that. As far as stormwater leaving the site, we would not sign off on them from the municipality's perspective if we didn't feel that it complied with the stormwater rules. There's discussion about impact to groundwater table and things like that from the bodies when they're put in the ground. I think that is, it's an important distinction that's separate from runoff that falls on the ground, that then overland flows over parking areas, over grass into storm management features, right? That's a different kind of runoff. Once it enters into the soil and then it gets into groundwater, that's different. By the applicant's own professional, you know, I think he's characterized, you know, five bodies in the ground equating to one septic field, right? There's approximately 5,440 plots proposed that may be reduced. Mr. Jackson said they have to go get DEP, wetlands approvals, they might lose 500 or so, right? If it stays as it currently is, at one septic field per five buried bodies, that would be the equivalent of almost 1,100 septic fields on this property, right? So, I can tell you, I'm not an expert in how bodies decompose and things like that. That's up to you to weigh based off of the applicant's expert and the objector's expert, right? But I can tell you at like the Board of Health level, Monmouth County, at the state level, there's certain restrictions that get put in place as far as the number of septic systems on the property, separation from septic systems to other infrastructure, to water courses, to stormwater management infrastructure, to wells and things like that. You know, so, I just want to put that in context. You know, by their applicant's own expert, he's saying five bodies is one septic system. You're putting the equivalent potentially of 1,100 septic systems on the property. So, there's the stormwater, and then there's the groundwater impact with the use that's being proposed.
Mr. Chairman, my comments to Mr. Cullen, he said I misrepresented it. That's exactly what he testified to, what he just said again now. My comments to, he looked at the stormwater management and the hydrology in terms of stormwater management, whether we're going to have four feet of water on the property, and whether we were building in the wetlands or in the streamland. I don't think I misrepresented anything. And as far as the 5,000, the number of graves, the testimony was, this is going, the other, the, the Evergreen is in 17, 1870. There's going to be hundreds of years that the, that it's going to take to get up to the maximum. That's what the testimony is. So, what Mr. Stankin's testimony was, that there's only going to be a few burials per year, and that the decomposition is over, I think he said in a couple months for the most part. So, to suggest that there are 5,000, the equivalent of 5,000 septic fields here, I don't think that's consistent with the evidence.
Did you just say five burials a year?
No. What was the number a year?
It was about approximately 100.
100. It was, it was, it's not going to be the full maximum. Cemeteries take decades to get filled up, and that's what the testimony was.
So, the, and the point that I want to make-
So, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest, Mr. Jackson made his closing. The whole back and forth is, I, I would think, like, isn't, like, this is, it's not appropriate. Like, if, I, I, I would like to have like a couple of legal points addressed-
Okay.
-if I can, since legal arguments were made. Mr. Jackson, you rely on resolution, and if you, we could put it back up, John.
Yes.
R-23-270.
I do.
And that relies on New Jersey statute 45:27-25A. And, hold on.
So, that just recites the statute paraphrasing it to say-
Well, but, hold on.
Okay.
I had the statute up. Hold on a second. So, that statute says that a cemetery shall not be established or enlarged in any municipality without first obtaining the consent of the municipality by resolution. It also says in subsection B, no more than five cemeteries may be established in any one municipality, and not more than 3% of the area of any municipality shall be devoted to cemetery purposes. As the representative, of legal representative, the applicant, have, do you know whether or not there were proofs submitted to the council as to the number of cemeteries, whether in the number, in number or in terms of percentage of land use?
I did not handle that application. I believe that was Mr. Cohen, or it might have been my client directly. I, I did not handle that. I do not know what was submitted.
Because the statute further says a governing body may by resolution waive any of the limitations, including the number of cemeteries, except the resolution doesn't cite that that provision was waived. So, and have, have you established in this application how many cemeteries there are in Howell as we speak?
No, because we have the consent of the governing body per this resolution.
So, the, the, even though the resolution doesn't say how many cemeteries there are, nor are they waiving any requirement in there, it's your legal position that the council waive that requirement?
My legal position is that this has bearing on the, on the, on the use variance, because because the governing body has determined that it has no objection for a cemetery at this location.
So, my point is, is that you're using, you're using the resolution as a sword and a shield.
I'm sorry.
You're saying that the statute upon which the resolution is premised qualifies it as a inherently beneficial use, and you're all, but you're saying that you don't have knowledge of whether or not at the time the resolution was issued, as to whether or not there are more than five cemeteries located in Howell Township. And you agree with me, the resolution doesn't specifically say that or waive any, any provision?
I'm stating that this resolution says that the governing body has no objection to a cemetery at this location, and as I argued, I believe that has legal significance, because it's a little different than an ordinary situation where the governing body has determined that a use is not appropriate for that zone.
And can you cite to a case, in terms of the inherent beneficial use, can you cite to any case which is held that a cemetery is inherently beneficial use? Because I don't think I heard that. I just heard like a summary saying it must be true. So, I'm just wondering, then, there must be cases that support that.
There is not a particular case that I can point to that refers to a cemetery. There are cases that rely upon religious institutions, and I have no doubt that the court will determine that this is an inherently beneficial use.
Well, again, I view that like, I view that as a threat. So, why are you threatening me at what a court, I'm asking you for your legal argument.
I can tell you're getting frustrated, and I can see you.
Now, John, John.
I understand the concern, but I understand the precedent, but I apologize, but...
I could tell you're getting upset, and I could see you actually slamming your fist into your other hand.
No, because I'm just, I'm just concerned, forgive me.
Just let the record reflect that this board member has been going like this all night, where he punches your fist into your hand.
So, John, so, Emery, just wait a second.
I just want the record to reflect.
I was asking, all I was asking you, you're making me, you're making a legal argument.
I am.
And I'm asking you, is there any case law that you can cite, other than you saying you, you're certain you're going to win in the Superior Court if you litigate it?
Those were not my words.
Yeah, well, it was your word. They were your words. And I'm asking, are there any cases which say that a religion, that say a cemetery is an inherently beneficial use? And you're saying the answer is no. You're not aware of any cases, but your argument is, is because it's associated with a religious use, that therefore, in your view, that that meets the definition? Is that a fair summary of your argument?
Because I think a cemetery, in its own right, religious or not religious, is an inherently beneficial use. Our planner made that argument for the reasons that our planner made. There are legal reasons for that, that I made in my summation. The fact that it's focused toward a particular religion, I think makes it, gives it even stronger elements for a inherently beneficial use, for the reasons that I stated, and that the former chairman, who came up and told this board that it only serves a particular stripe of people, makes it not inherently beneficial use. I think that is the antithesis of what the law is. So, that's my legal argument on that. The board can accept it or reject it.
So, I think we're done with the closing and the legal argument. I think it's up to, up to the board now.
And is it your opinion, Mr. Bear, are you advising the board that this is not an inherently beneficial use? Because I think they should get that from you.
You're making the legal argument. I am, you have not provided anything.
It's up to us to make the interpretation.
And you didn't make, and you didn't make, you didn't provide anything in writing in advance for the board or for me to consider as the board's attorney, making this legal argument. So, all I was trying to do was flesh it out for the record. That's, since you just summarized, you just said it was so. So, that's, that was the purpose of my...
Just said it was so.
Well, that's what you said. It must be true, because I'm arguing it.
Thank you.
I think at this time, I think we want to move forward and make a motion on this application.
I'd like to ask a question.
Okay, one que...
When I was reviewing, about these types of cemeteries, I came across an article that said, even though you're proposing 5,400, and it might be reduced, that if there were a car accident and two people in the car both got killed, they have the right to be buried in the same grave site. So, if you have 5,200 grave sites, and along the way, multiple people want to be buried in the same grave site, you can't refuse them, because that's the law. And if that's the case, and that is true, then you could have 6,000, 7,000, 8,000 buried in there. And that was never brought up, and I'd like somebody to tell me that it is a law or isn't a law, a yes or no, before I proceed to vote.
I cannot comment on that, because I'm not familiar with what you're talking about.
Well, I read it, and it's on the computer with multiple articles about cemeteries, and it pointed out this particular instance. And it seems like this fact is being withheld from me, because I'm not hearing about it. I waited to the end to hope that somebody would bring it up and make it a reality, whether it's a law or not. Because if we approve this, there'll be 8,000 graves there and nothing to do about it. Because if five people get killed, you'll put in as many as you can into one grave site, and five people could be two grave sites, and then you got five there, and it goes on and on. So, to me, that's, the negative just so far outweighs the positive.
I cannot address your comments.
Well, then, let's proceed to vote, then. Thank you.
What you're referring to.
Yeah, yeah.
I think maybe I could, should just summarize. So, while in certain circumstances, or there are circumstances where a cemetery would be considered inherently beneficial, but they're not just automatically granted inherently beneficial stat, like status. And in the hearing in July, where the applicant's planner testified, she testified that it's inherently beneficial because it promotes the public welfare. And I feel like that's what we've been debating here for the past several months, that is this really promoting the public welfare, or is there substantial negative impact associated with that at this particular location? And the reason that it's important to differentiate between inherently beneficial and not is because an inherently beneficial use already automatically meets the particular suitability criteria. I don't think the site is particularly suitable, based upon the fact that the majority of the, of the residences in the area are on wells. If the site was located in an area where everyone was connected to public water, I would not have the same concerns about whether or not this promotes the public welfare. So, I professionally feel that the site is not particularly suited for this, given the concerns about the groundwater. And while there was testimony by the objector that maybe it's not, it's going to be a problem, there's also testimony by the applicant that maybe it is going to be a problem. He was specifically asked if he did a survey of the depth of the wells in the area, and he said no. So, yeah, a new well that gets drilled down to 200 feet probably is not going to be a problem, but if these older wells are not that deep, and we don't know how deep they are, which is not our responsibility to do that evaluation, it's the responsibility of the applicant to provide us the information that we need. So, there was no definitive testimony that this could not be a problem. In fact, I think that one of the comments that came up with, from the public, about how these cascades are actually constructed, which requires openings in them, which we had not heard up until tonight, also presents concerns for me with respect to the potential contamination of groundwater in this area. I honestly don't feel like they've provided us enough dispositive information that would alleviate those concerns. And if this was in an area of town, and there are a lot of areas in town that have public water, I don't think this would be as concerning. But this particular location, given its proximity to an environmentally sensitive water body, which drains to a reservoir, which, you know, I feel like there are still some outstanding concerns from my perspective with respect to particular suitability, as well as the negative criteria. And I do feel that this could potentially be substantially negative criteria. You know, it's not, you know how they say it's not just a detriment, it has to be a substantial detriment? This could potentially be substantial. The other thing I also want you guys to know, once you allow a cemetery on a piece of property, it's that way forever. You can, so, not only are there concerns, like, once you do this, you can't take it back from an environmental standpoint, once you allow a use on a particular piece of property, you can't take that away. So, that's why I feel like the site selection and the particular suitability of the site is so important. So, that's what I want you to think about while you're, and you can weigh the testimony, that's my opinion. You can weigh the testimony of the dueling experts, we do that all the time, as well as the information that was provided to you by various members of, of the public. But that's my professional opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I would object to all of that. We've now had, after the case is in, please, I have to make a record of this, I, we have after the case is in, the board's professional, who is the planner, taking it upon herself to give testimony and opinion, and make, and suggest to the board what the findings should be based on her opinion. There's no opportunity to cross-examine, it's just out of joint with the case. There's nothing wrong with the board's professionals weighing in and giving an opinion. That's what their review letter's for, and that's what the hearing is for. And if somebody's going to take a stance as an advocate for or against whether something's an inherently beneficial use, I think that does, is inappropriate to this process. And I just want to put my record, my objection on the record. Thank you.
Okay, duly noted. But at the same time, we have heard many cases where the planner has made positive comments. So, I don't have, she is allowed, she's our, she's here for us, and I want to hear what she has to say, whether it's good or bad for you. So, that's, it's just, that's how it is, and it's how we're going to interpret it.
That's right.
Okay. So, at this time, any more questions from the board? I'd like to entertain a motion.
Well, Mr. Chair, we've heard a lot, an awful lot, and I kind of been stuck on one thing, and it's the unknown. The environmental unknown, what's going to happen eight, 10, 15 years. And it's a well area, and the waterway that's there certainly finds its way into, you know, into other sensitive areas. So, for that reason, I want to make a motion to deny.
So, Andy, the, at this point, a yes would be for denial, a no would be?
If there's a second.
Okay.
Yeah.
First, is there a second?
A second.
Nick Barrelo, second?
So, a yes would be a rejection.
Yes, okay. Okay, Eileen, could we have a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Barrelo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
I want to publicly apologize to the attorney for my frustration earlier. There were just some things that were said that I was concerned about. My vote is yes.
Mr. Chairman, very much.
I'm going to concur with what Matt Hughes said. It is the unknown. We do not, none of us up here know what is going to happen in five or 10 years, whether it's going to happen or it's not going to happen. But I just don't feel this is the right location. I would love to see a cemetery such as this built in Howell, but in the right spot. And I don't want to put it in, and then five years later, we find there's an issue. So, my vote is yes as well.
Mr. Tyree.
I imagine we're not starting the next case?
Uh, let's see, what time is it?
10 o'clock.
Yeah, it's cut off, I'm sorry. Eileen, as far as Mr. Jackson, we have to kind of decide what we're doing as far as a future date.
Our next meeting is February 24th. There's three applications on. Two of them are already started, so if I put you there, you'd be third. March 10th has four applications on it. March 24th has a large one. April 7th has two applications. And then April 28th has nothing. It's up to you.
Are you going on February 24th?
You can, but you're going to be third, and I don't know how many of you are going to take.
It's up to you. Case is all apart, we're ready to go, you never know, but this could happen again.
Tonight, I think there was supposed to be another case.
I need a date for him, I need this to...
John, are the professionals on the other, on your other application, would they be available?
They're right here.
Are they available on the 24th?
Are they available on the 24th?
That's two weeks from tonight.
Are you available on the 24th? John Ray's here, Rob's here, and Justin is here.
Are you available on the 24th?
Yes.
Is that okay, the 24th?
I mean, I don't care.
I think, I mean, we should try to make, I'll come.
It's up to the boss.
We're going to carry them.
Everybody.
Carry the Oakland application to February 24th. They'll be third on the agenda, but that's the best I can do.
Announce it, everybody. I'm sorry, we're...
You know what? We learned from you.
Okay, attention, anybody here for the BA-26A Oakland Road LLC application? That is going to be carried till February 24th, 2025. Expiration is still the same, March 1st. Do they have to re-notice?
No.
Okay.
No further notice.
Okay. Okay, I guess so, we're, we'll see you back on the 24th.
Thank you very much.
Okay. You too, Ms. Jackson. Is there any further business at the board?
Most of you do adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.